I've got a little announcement first before we get going on the call to order. Unfortunately, I was not aware of the fact my administrator just let me know we don't do public comment on special meetings. I was not aware of that, so we're all gonna have to wait until February. I am very, very sorry about that, all you gentlemen in the back, straining to have your voices heard, but we will certainly have your voices heard in February. So, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order, January 29, 2019. This is our special city council meeting to hear the U.S. Solar application for the A1 and A2 zoning table use change. First on the agenda is our place of allegiance, please.
My place of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. It is my happy duty to tell you that the first thing on our agenda tonight is the oath of office for Mr. Giefer and Mr. Rog. And we were very unhappy and dismayed. We didn't have them for our January meeting, but here they are for our special meeting, January 29th. So, who would like to go first, Mr. Rog or Mr. Giefer? I've got Giefer up first. I guess you're first. Jeff, stand up and you will have the oath administered to you, sir.
Mr. Giefer, over here, if you'd just raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Jeff Giefer.
I, Jeff Giefer.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of office of council member of the city of Grant.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member of the city of Grant.
In the county of Washington.
In the county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Jeff.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, John Rog.
I, John Rog.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member of the city of Grant.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council in the city of Grant.
In the county of Washington and the state of Minnesota.
In the county of Washington, the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
A couple of quick comments. I know this is a special city council agenda, so I just have a couple of comments here tonight, just very quickly. The first time you two are at the table. Both Danny and Jeff are pretty solid-sized Minnesota guys, so John.
What are you trying to say?
Nothing.
I've been on a diet.
Yeah. If you want to be heard down there, I might not always see your hand, so please feel free to say Jeff, Mayor, whatever. Tom, same thing down there, or any of the other staff that need to get my attention. Exactly. So, let me know if you do need some attention, I'll get right to you. So, looking for an approval of our agenda tonight, please.
Also move.
Do I have a second?
No second.
Very good. All those in favor approve of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Just a word to the new guys, you know, I don't expect to be asked, you know, I'm not gonna be, it's your job now. Guys, make those motions and seconds, all right?
Yeah. That's right, guys. You gotta jump on. All right, very good. Thanks, Tom. I'm just gonna preface what we're gonna be doing tonight. The reason that we're here tonight on such a brutally cold winter night is to consider the resolution number 2018-25, the U.S. Solar text amendment application. To explain to those of you in the audience, and there isn't too many, but there's gonna be a lot of people at home watching this, U.S. Solar has come forward to the city, and what we're discussing tonight is actually a text amendment to change our use table. And Jennifer, I'll ask you to interrupt me if I get any of this wrong, okay? You're the expert, so interrupt. But, U.S. Solar has asked us to change our use table in both our A1 and A2 zoning districts in order to allow CUP applications to be made for the solar power plant installations. So, that's what we're here to talk about tonight. We are not going to take action tonight for the very simple reason that U.S. Solar has asked us to move the actual action portion of the consideration of their text amendment to the February meeting. So, in February, we'll actually be taking action on this. Tonight, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be exploring some of the research and some of the things that the council has done to prepare for that, to give both U.S. Solar and our staff overall the reasoning behind what we're thinking, just to sort of flesh out what we've done, what we're thinking, and the research that has been compiled, both for and against this resolution. So, with that said, I'm just gonna open this up to the council. Whoever would like to go first and sort of talk to us about your individual research and what you found, and inform again the staff and U.S. Solar. And, clerk, please, yes.
The city planner does have a brief presentation.
Presentation first. Thank you very much. Yep. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Because this is the first time we're actually seeing this application for this round, obviously, staff typically gives a little bit of an introduction, a little bit of background, so you have a sense of what is being proposed and what's being requested. So, if I could go ahead and have the PowerPoint. I'm gonna attempt to do this with mittens on, so I'm gonna be completely honest with you. If that doesn't work, I'll take them off. All right. So, before you this evening, we have a request, as the mayor indicated, to amend our zoning ordinance to allow for community solar energy systems to be permitted with a conditional use permit within our A1 and A2 zoning districts. The applicant this evening is United States Solar Corporation, or U.S. Solar. There are a couple of different names that have been identified throughout the application, but it's, for the purposes of this presentation, known, or we're calling it U.S. Solar. They're all the same entity. The owner of the property that has co-signed the application, Ms. Welander, she resides at, actually, I believe that this is the property, they keep correcting me, so I believe this is the property where the proposed installation is located, not where she resides, but I could clarify that for the next meeting on February 5th. But, essentially, what's going on here is that Ms. Welander has to be a party to the application as a landowner, because U.S. Solar does not have property in this city without them co-signing and being a part of it. So, that's what enables them to make the application to amend our zoning ordinance, or our ordinance requirements. So, as I stated, this is to actually amend the ordinance. This is not to approve a specific project. There's been a little bit of confusion with respect to how it's stated within the application, and then also how the petition was identified in the application. This does not approve a specific project. This is a change that would relate to all properties that are guided and zoned A1 and A2 that would meet the performance standards if you were to consider the text amendment this evening. So, in terms of background, because it's taken us a while to get here, I thought it would be unofficial to give you a sense of sort of how we got here, and for those that are listening at home, so that they have a sense of the background. The planning commission held a duly notice public hearing on November 20th, 2018, to consider this application. At that planning commission meeting, there was discussion and public testimony. There were several residents that attended that meeting and voiced support for the text amendment and also for the specific project. So, staff, again, made sure to, you know, clarify that this is for the A1 and A2 zoning district. However, members of the public did speak specifically on the individual project itself. After discussion and after the public hearing and the public testimony, the planning commission did ultimately recommend denial of the proposed text amendment, citing concerns regarding visual impact and also about the use specifically, and their conclusion that it was not consistent with the comprehensive plan's vision for the community. So, at the end of the day, that is the recommendation that they passed on to you. In terms of, obviously, usually when we get a planning commission recommendation, it comes before you on the subsequent meeting, so that would have been the December meeting. If you recall, staff actually had the staff report in your packets, in that December packet, and between the time that the packet was distributed and the time of your meeting, the applicant's general counsel provided a written letter, which I believe was five or six pages, whatever it was, identifying issues that they saw and some supplemental information. So, based on that November 29th letter and correspondence, staff came to you and said, you know, we haven't had the appropriate amount of time to take a look at that, and could we please table that application, and would you consider that? So, the city council at that time actually determined that that was a prudent and good idea, and tabled the discussion for the January meeting. So, because of that whole timeline, staff issued an extension letter per Minnesota statute 1599. That letter was submitted to the applicant and the owner, indicating that we needed additional time to review the supplemental information that I know was received by both the applicant and the owner. And then we scheduled the first discussion to be held with you, the council, at the first meeting in January. Prior to that meeting, the applicant requested that it be tabled again, and that a final discussion or determination be made at our regular meeting in February. At that time, you as a body determined, look, we need to have a little bit more discussion surrounding this prior to that and having to take action. Thus, why are we are all here when it is 17 below today? So, one of the things that was talked about, obviously, in December, and the reasoning for tabling the discussion was actually the November 29th letter that was submitted by the applicant's general counsel. I'd like to go on record that this is my response to some of the items that are in there. This is not our attorney's response to some of the items that are in there. This is not in a staff report. This is in a PowerPoint. I am happy to share it with the applicant, who I'm sure would like to feverishly type this down, but I'm happy to share it. So, but this is just my response. After working with applicants over the years, I know that it's important for us to respond to some of the items that are called to attention to make sure that we can clarify the record, so I'd like that opportunity to do that. So, first of all, on page one, there is a statement that essentially, at the planning commission, that the city staff introduced the topic by emphasizing that the planning commission, and I think that this was misstated in this case, but had, that basically the city council had disagreed with the planning commission prior to the recommendation in 2017, and that in doing so, that the city's staff essentially instructed the planning commission to consider the prior text amendment and the new application as a single application. Staff would like to clarify that we disagree with that statement. The planning commission was provided a full background of how the 2017 application process transpired. The reason behind that was because the applicant's narrative stated incorrectly the process, and we thought it was important for the planning commission to understand what that process was. In addition to that, the letter from November 29th indicated that it was sort of staff's conception that we bring in the 2017 application process, but when you read the narrative, when you read the 29th letter from the 29th, most of the references revert back to that 2017 process. So, staff was simply responding to how it was submitted within the narrative, and would like to clarify that we disagree with the way that is characterized and paraphrased on page one of the letter, from a planning perspective only.
Thank you.
Secondly, there was some discussion about the timeline and some of the events that transpired that went into the planning commissioners' considerations with respect to 2017. Once again, staff would like to note that the narrative that was submitted with the application incorrectly identified the process and the timeline, and that clarifying that was incredibly important to make sure that the planning commissioners understood what happened, what the discussion process looked like, and how that 2017 draft was created. On page one, at the end, there is a statement that was stated that without any further reasoning, the planning commission recommended denial of the application. Staff did provide a summary of the planning commissioners' discussion in your packets this evening. You can also take a look at that in a minute, and staff would actually disagree with this statement, because planning commissioners did express concerns with respect to the use, how the use was defined, also with respect to visual impact. They also stated that they went and traveled and saw other installations in adjacent communities. So, staff would like to bring that to your attention to make sure that you know that the planning commissioners were thoughtful in terms of their recommendation to you this evening. The applicant clearly does not agree with their recommendation, which is fine, but there was discussion centered around why. With respect to page two on there, and I promise you I'm not going through all pages of the November 29th letter, there's just a few things that I think are very important. There was quite a bit of discussion and a statement that was specific that said solar gardens are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff would note that many of the goal statements that were identified in that November 29th letter were taken out of context and did not include the supplemental strategies that support the goal statements. When you lift the goal statements out independently, you can make them sound or appear the way you want them to, but they need to be read in coordination with the strategy statements. I do have a sample of that, if you should choose when we get into the discussion item, but I did bring the comprehensive plan with me to demonstrate what I mean by the statement.
Be sure to break into our discussion in an appropriate manner to share that, okay? Appropriate time. Thank you.
So, secondly, staff would note from a planning perspective that several of the analysis that were provided within the letter assumed that solar gardens are a use that was already determined as being an agricultural use. So, all of the language and the supporting analysis that goes along with it assumes that that is how the use is being classified. Staff would note that, from staff's perspective, it's actually within the purview of the planning commission and the city council to take a look at what is the appropriate classification of that use, and that there is no accepted terminology, that it is in fact, that the solar panel installation itself is an agricultural use. As staff noted within your staff report, which is on page five in my printout, most of the analysis deals with the secondary or the ancillary use. It does not deal with the specific solar panels themselves. So, many of the defenses or the analysis that are put into that letter are around things like the installation of the prairie grasses and those types of things. Those are sort of the secondary pieces of it, but not actually the use of the solar panels themselves.
Right.
So, again, that's more for clarification for your discussion this evening, not that staff has a judgment, but just would like to clarify that statement. So, moving on from the November 29th letter, now staff would like to actually clarify an item that is within your staff report this evening, because there was some consternation and objection from the applicant, so we'd like to address that in the public this evening. The applicant provided an email to the staff, which I don't believe was actually passed on to the city council, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but based on the correspondence we received, there is in your staff report this evening on page two, it's the summary concluding statement that says, based on staff's research and discussion with other communities, it seems that there is general consensus to limit CSCS to light industrial or general business districts. The applicant responded to that staff report and responded to staff with an email and requested that we either A) provide sufficient evidence to prove your assertion true, or B) revise the council packet for the January 2nd meeting to correct this false statement. Given that, staff would like to bring to your attention the research that was completed, so that you have a sense of what information we used in order to do that. So, our response is staff researched similarly situated and developed communities, such as Medina, Independence, Oronome, Minatosta, and Scandia. So, we were very deliberate to find communities that had similar types of uses to what is in the city of Grant, to understand how they were addressing it. We also spoke to several planners that had this under development, a solar ordinance of some type under development, and also spoke to some of the planners that were in some of those communities. The ones, as you might imagine, that have the ordinance under development did not wish to be identified, because they are still going through the process and trying to hammer out what the issues were, but those samples I thought prudent to provide you, so you can see similarly situated and developed communities to make that assertion and that statement. All of our discussions that we had with various planners were based on this idea of how do you define what the use of these solar gardens is? How do you, is it a quasi-public utility? Is it some kind of light industrial use with ancillary agricultural uses? Is it, so a lot of the discussion focused around how do we actually classify the use? Now, just from a planning perspective, if it was an agreed-to-use from a state perspective or from a federal-state, you know, standpoint, the debate wouldn't be out there, because it would be addressed on your use table as an agricultural use, and that would be the standard use. But that is not in fact the case, and communities are grappling with what is the appropriate way to classify this use. And so, that was the statement in the staff report, and that was the foundation of where that statement came from. So, staff respectfully will not correct the statement, but again, provides clarification to the applicant. Staff would also note that in the email that was provided, that several of the examples of places where they were in very agricultural use are defined that way. Several of the examples that were provided were in outstate. Some of them were more local, but many of them were not, had a very different development pattern than what is currently here, and where we are geographically located within the metropolitan area. Some of the things that the ordinances that we researched revealed, just for your reference, were that all of the ordinances that we saw, including Medina, Independence, et cetera, required that the, any sort of ground-mounted solar installation, which is how they kind of classified it in many of these ordinances, so they didn't classify between community and individual, they just said it fits a ground-mounted system. Several of those ordinances, they all required there to be a principal structure on the property, and that the solar installation had to be accessory to the principal structure. So, that was a fairly, in a residential district, so that was a fairly universal standard that existed. Secondly, the only place that would be permitted in many of those ordinances, the only places that it was permitted as a, you know, its own primary principal use, were in the light industrial, general business, commercial types of designations. That's where it was permitted, as opposed to being only an accessory use. Secondly, several of the ordinances, when it was in a residential installation, limited the total square footage permitted for that solar installation. Others addressed it as being an accessory building square footage and must be counted towards that. So, there are a couple of different ways that it was handled. Many of them permitted or were silent on whether community was permitted versus individual, but instead got at regulating it through the square footages. Okay, so, moving on, those are staff's clarifications based on inquiries that were received by the applicant. So, this is a bit of the background with respect to the 2017 process. This was all in your staff report, so I'm actually not going to spend too much time on this. I put this up for reference. If we have questions as we go through the discussion, we can certainly come back to it, but in the interest of time, I'll go past it. What may be of more interest to you is actually the differences between the 2017 reading and the proposed reading tonight. So, I know the applicant took issue with relating it back to 2017. However, the applicant's narrative specifically identified what was different from 2017 and how it addressed your concerns stated in 2017. So, based on that, some of the changes that were identified to try to address or mitigate some of the issues they thought they heard during that process were to limit the installations of these systems to parcels with a minimum lot size of 40 acres, to require a one-mile radius between all installations, to limit the CSCS size to 10 acres, and then additional performance standards with respect to setbacks. So, all of those were the changes that were in addition to or on top of what was in the 2017 draft version, for those of you that were with us at that time. It's the mittens, sorry.
You're doing good.
It's coming. Okay. So, the table of uses, as they've proposed to change it, would look like this. So, at the current moment, we do not allow community solar energy systems, so this would allow it with a conditional use permit in A1 and A2 as proposed to be amended. Once again, here is a summary of what the performance standards were that are in your draft ordinance this evening that is presented by the applicant. So, again, it addresses things such as needing a minimum of 40 acres, there is primary frontage on the county and state roads, spacing of one mile, et cetera. So, purposes of your discussion, for purposes of your discussion tonight, obviously, when we're looking at a text amendment, and the city attorney can certainly chime in and support this through better legal analysis than I can. When it comes to changing our ordinances, you have quite a bit of discretion with respect to whether or not that's something you want to do or not. But, when you're considering those applications, as you have before you this evening, your analysis and your discussion needs to focus around a couple of different ideas or different concepts. One of them being, are the proposed changes consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan? That'd be in the first part of the discussion. Second, are the proposed changes compatible with existing regulations and standards within the affected and applicable zoning district? So, again, because we're looking at a citywide change, you have to consider how this would affect all properties that are situated in that zoning district and in that land use. Will the proposed changes have a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the community? And finally, if you were to find the proposal, something that you would like to entertain, are there additional considerations that should be addressed within the ordinance changes that were not contemplated by the application? So, those are a few questions to get you started in your discussion this evening. But that's what staff has. I know that's a lot, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. That was comprehensive, more comprehensive than I knew was coming, but still good to lay out sort of the process that we've undergone to this point. And certainly, it's been a long and somewhat torturous process, so thank you for that, laying it back out for us. Now that you've had a chance to comment on that, Jen, I'm gonna turn to legal staff just very quickly. And Dave, we've had some time here. We've all done some research. I'm not sure if you want to update us on anything that you found, or do you have any additional updates before we launch into this as a council?
I don't have any updates, and I don't have anything to add, but as the discussion proceeds, and I'd invite you to hear from the applicant, too.
Certainly.
That may have something to offer.
Certainly. And on that note, I'm gonna ask Mr. Watts to stand up, and if you have any additional information at this point that you want to give us. Now, with that said, Mr. Watts, please approach. And then, we're gonna be probably calling you up to ask you some questions as we go through this, just to clarify our research and get your take on it.
That'd be appreciated.
Yep. No, we won't leave you out there. We're gonna have you up here for questions probably several different times, but if you want to start by just kind of introducing yourself to the people watching at home, and then tell us what you want us to hear before we launch into our research. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is David Watts, and I work for U.S. Solar. Unfortunately, our landowner, Joyce Welander, is not able to be here tonight. While Joyce did request that the meeting be delayed to February 5, we are here tonight, and for that reason, we would be open to council action tonight. Thank you for allowing to present this text amendment application. As Jennifer laid out, it builds off of a previous ordinance draft in 2017. Here's what's changed from then to now. Here's what's changed from them, from then to now. Community solar would be much more restricted under the new text amendment, and the citizens of Grant have shown overwhelming support for community solar in their city. Recently, I was speaking with a Grant resident who asked me, "So, why does the council oppose community solar?" And I didn't really have a good answer. We've heard overwhelming support for this from the Grant residents, including the petition that's included in our application. Community solar increases the tax base, protects landowner rights, enhances the air, soil, and water quality and wildlife, and improves nearby agricultural production. All of these cannot be separated from our application. These, what are being known as ancillary benefits. This is a private investment in pollinator-friendly habitat that is required within the application. So, our text amendment requires it and therefore should be considered because there are significant and, and very positive impacts to the city through private investment. By prohibiting community solar, however, the City of Grant has put itself at a disadvantage compared to most of the permitting jurisdictions in the state. Grant has prevented itself from receiving these benefits from land use that is injurious to no one and does not cost the taxpayer a penny. Our memo that we submitted on the 29th showed 14 separate goals or ways in which community solar supports the Grant comprehensive plan. Claiming that our application is a commercial or industrial use and is therefore inconsistent with the comp plan would be unreasonable because the letter that we submitted showed how our application actually supports those 14 goals. Despite the staff's claim that there is, quote, "general consensus to limit CSES to light industrial or general business districts," this is something that Jennifer touched on, despite that, actually, the vast majority of permitting jurisdictions that permit community solar permit it on agriculturally-zoned land. So, for example, here are some that I was able to name just off the top of my head. Carver County, Scott County, Rice County, Blue Earth County, La Sura County, Wright County, McLeod County, Redwood County, Renville County, Stearns County, Benton County, Sherburne County, Shisago County, Pope County, Murray County, Pipestone County, Freeborn County, Steel County, Lyon County, Clay County, Chippewa County, Meeker County, Winona County, Nicolet County, City of North Branch, City of Cottage Grove, Shisago City, Buffalo Township, Haven Township, and more. Because the vast majority of jurisdictions that permit community solar do so on agriculturally-zoned land, to suggest that there is general consensus to limit it to industrial or business districts is not reasonable. The Planning Commission's comparison of our application to what they drove by on Manning Avenue in Scandia is also unreasonable because those community solar gardens would immediately fail under the ordinance that's before you tonight. They are too large, they do not have landscape screening, they have too many interconnection poles, their fences chain-link, it has barbed wire, they don't have large enough setbacks. Any single one of these reasons would fail under our ordinance, so these are not comparable projects. If you approve our application, community solar gardens like those on Manning Ave would be prohibited. If the council rejected this on the grounds that this damages the rural character and is not in the community's best interest, that would be unreasonable. Because there are hundreds of Grant residents who signed a petition urging, quote, "The City of Grant to adopt an ordinance to allow for the eight-acre community solar garden on Joyce's Century Farm," end quote. As you may know, local media outlets, including KSTP, The White Bear Press, and The Grant Reporter so far have picked up this story. This has brought a lot of attention to Grant and to community solar. And with so many eyes on the City of Grant and overwhelming public support, we see this as an opportunity for the city to show that its representatives do represent its citizens who overwhelmingly support community solar in their city. We're hopeful that the council approves our application tonight, but if it's denied, we'll consider any options available, including a ballot referendum. We respectfully request the Grant City Council to approve our application, and I'm happy to have an open conversation, answer any questions, please just let me know.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Watt. We'll be exploring those issues, I think, tonight in a pretty comprehensive manner. So, with that said, I'm going to kind of launch into the council part of this, and again, please be available for questions. Doesn't look like you're going anywhere, you took off your coat and it's 17 below, so. I think, I think you're staying for a while.
Leave it on.
Yeah, leave it on. There you go. Okay, real good. Which councilperson would like to go first? Mr. Carr, your hand is up.
Yeah, I'm, you know, and I appreciate the chance to talk to the applicant and, you know, with the, you know, sometimes with the Planning Commission and, you know, those residents, and you get to the council level, that, that, that kind of door is kind of closed. So, it gives, doesn't give us a chance to maybe chat as much as we could. So, that sometimes gives people the feeling that we're, that we're like, but we didn't care, didn't hear, so, it's good. So, um, but I think, I think, as Jennifer stated, we're here to talk about, you know, our change ordinance to allow, you know, basically, I'm going to call it commercial solar in Grant. You know, the applicant, by resubmitting this application, based on whatever reasons, maybe, you know, because he thought maybe he had to or whatever, just understands that, you know, this use is probably not allowed unless you get a text amendment. I mean, obviously, you wouldn't apply it otherwise, right? I mean, okay, so we're here. The decision made, was made by the council, you know, to deny, and now you're back, you want us to revisit this. Looking at the request, for me, you know, it's more about the use and what physically is constructed to operate the use. Obviously, if you're operating a commercial solar plant with, you know, one foot tall, something that we could screen or didn't see, it wouldn't, to me, it wouldn't be as big a deal, right? Obviously, it's, for me, it's not solar, I'm not against solar, I've said that here before, I'm not, you know, I'm just, it's about the look and those scenic views and the things that it says in our comp plan. That's kind of what, that's, that's been my statements, it's not a secret. It's also not about what specific neighbors want, what's socially acceptable, what people think we should allow in Grant by a petition or whatever. It doesn't even matter what I think. It's what's in the comp plan and what the ordinance say should allow. Otherwise, we should change them. And we'll have a discussion about some of that, but, but I've learned a lot about these projects and my, you know, I, I did have a, you know, at the first meeting, you know, I had, thought I had done my research, but I revisited that because I've been asked to. So, I did my homework, I've got a stack of stuff here to talk about and some questions for you, so, I think that'll be good. But, you know, my concern is not about, you know, the little things. My concern is about the big things that this change could bring to Grant, and as Jennifer correctly stated, for all of Grant, you know. And just looking forward, because, you know, it's one thing to allow it, and next thing to talk about, you know, if somebody gets a CP, what does that mean? So, well, you know, I'll, I'd like to talk about, you know, some of those things later. What I'd like to do now, because, again, I feel like, you know, maybe we didn't have a chance to communicate as much, and it sounds like you're back for more communication, so that's good. So, I'd like to ask maybe if you'd step up and we could ask you a few questions and just kind of communicate that way to start with?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready, sir.
Okay. So, if you would talk about the project, and I know Jennifer covered a lot of ground in different communities, and what do you think of the primary use of this project is? What's the primary use?
To generate like clean electricity locally.
Okay.
That's the purpose of the project.
The purpose of the project?
If that were not to exist, the pollinator-friendly habitat would not exist.
Okay, but the primary purpose is to create electricity?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Clean, local electricity.
Okay. So, and, and then you've, we've talked about how it fits, and we've got a memo, which I'll discuss later, but please explain to me how this fits into our current A2 zone, or A1, because you've asked for both, which are both basically the same now in Grant, so.
Yeah, and I think with the 40-acre minimum, that might actually only allow for use in one of those, but.
But those two zones, actually, they're pretty much the same. They were, I can get into history, we don't have to, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I'll have to.
Yeah.
So, the, there are a couple of ways to answer the question. First is if you look at the groups that are getting like fired up about community solar, it's not just electricity-related. We have the Minnesota Farm Bureau, as well as the National Farm Bureau, Minnesota Farmers Union, for example, these folks are going around sort of campaigning for and putting into their actual official policy that they support the expansion of community solar. And you might ask, well, what's the reason? This function's very similar to CRP land, they like that too. Because what we're doing, and it's actually not just required in this ordinance, but by Minnesota state statute, it's any community solar garden must be accompanied with the entirety of the array planted in pollinator-friendly habitat. So, it's really not possible to separate the issues, although I'm not going to pretend the primary purpose of the project is not electricity generation.
Okay.
The other primary purpose of it is to provide savings to local schools, cities, businesses, and residents. That might be one of the reasons that I've seen a lot of public support, because this is not just reducing our need to import energy and burn fossil fuels, but it's actually providing economic benefit to school districts and cities and residents.
By, by jobs, okay, all right. If approved, should this use be exempt from Grant's current long-held ordinance rules? I mean, should be, should variance be given in the area? Do we need to change, you know, I mean, we have rules in, in these areas, like, we haven't got a CUP application yet. So, would, would you expect that if this use was allowed, that variances would also be allowed? To, to make this successful?
I think that.
Would that be your expectation?
No, I think an applicant that did this correctly would have a project that is in compliance with this text amendment proposed, as well as any other standards, there would not be variance needed.
Okay, all right. Can you show us, can you talk about a solar project that you know, that you guys have been involved with, that was successfully screened or that you did?
Yeah.
I don't know if I saw any pictures of that.
Of, of the project specifically.
Did we have any pictures of anyone that were successfully screened?
I don't, I mean, I can give you a picture where you can't see solar, but that's not very useful, but that's.
Oh, an overhead and then maybe a side view, but I, I haven't seen any, that was a question, but you have some that you could provide?
Yes, this exists. We have, we have even a five-megawatt project in Carver County that you'd drive past and have no idea it existed. But the big thing, if I can just take a moment to.
Sure.
Answer something.
I don't want to waste too much time, but the.
Yeah, just, just super quickly, I know that visibility is one of the big issues for you and probably other council members. One of the requirements in the text amendment that we proposed is that the landscape screening plan must be approved, so this is a subjective approval. And if the body does not feel that it's adequately screened, you reject it. And so, therefore, you would never have a permitted community solar garden that was not adequately screened.
Okay, all right. What do you understand about fire possession, prevention of these projects? You know, safety for the fire department if there is a fire, or just so they don't, you know, don't have a fire under? What do you understand about that?
The main thing that I know is that some jurisdictions, Scott County, for example, requires the solar developer to have a meeting or at least communicate with directly the fire and sometimes police, which I think is probably not necessary, but fire's a great idea. And best management practices that are used all across the nation are communicated to the fire department folks. Access to the gate code, for example, things like that. But there is also an automatic shut-off to completely disconnect from power, the array, in the event of an emergency or something like that.
Okay, all right. Can you then, you know, and this is kind of a follow-up question to the fire, so can you explain that, like, the vegetation maintenance typically done on site? You know, I mean, herbicides, I mean, do, I mean, I, we talk about the low-growing, but I mean, you, what do you know about that? And who, who pays for that? And who takes care of that stuff on the site?
So, we pay for it, but we are not the experts. We use, one of our preferred contractors for this is Prairie Restorations, Inc. They're based out of Princeton, they've been, you know, they're headquartered there, they have been around for over 40 years, so, they've been doing this a long time outside the context of solar. You know, it's the same vegetative, you know, pollinator-friendly stuff they've been working with, but now they've found a way to join the two. And so, they are the ones that come out, they expect approximately quarterly visits for vegetative maintenance. That includes, you know, just the plant stuff, but then they would also do, if necessary, spot treatment with herbicides for any sort of problemed areas with weeds. All in all, the pesticide usage would be a dramatic reduction compared to traditional row crop agriculture.
Okay, all right. Does the Minnesota Public Utility Commission oversee solar power right now?
Yes, the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission and XL Energy are the two bodies that created this community solar program. It actually was at the state legislature first. They passed the legislation in, I think, 2014 to, I mean, that's the reason that I'm here doing this. But then the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission and XL Energy are the ones that set the actual standards, such as now in 2015, one of the things they set was a maximum of one megawatt for any project. So, some of these five megawatts that you drive by, well, we're talking a maximum size of 20% of that with just three poles instead of a maximum of 15, to some of these older ones that you see.
But you, you're saying that the Minnesota Public Utility Commission oversees solar?
They oversee this program, yeah, the community solar program specifically.
The program, but they don't oversee you?
Well, we have to abide, we have to play on the program rules that are set by the Public Utilities Commission and by XL Energy.
Okay. What, what is the position of the National Park Service on these projects? I mean, the reason of my question is, we're talking about scenic views, what is the, a lot of scenic views in the parks, what, what, do you know what their position is?
I've never heard anything from the parks.
It happened in Scandia, there was an issue up there, I just thought you might have read about that.
Okay.
What's the position of the FAA on these projects?
Every project has to pass the FAA screen. This project specifically is not near the notice criteria, so not only are we not in violation of the FAA radius, but we're outside the radius for.
Okay.
Submitting a, a notice.
Okay, is this type of project mandated in Grant by any entity in the government? As, I think Jessica, or, we were talking about that before, Jennifer was talking about.
My understanding is no, because the comp plan just states that there must be adequate solar access.
There's no federal mandate right now for this.
There's not a federal mandate for community solar specifically, there's a state mandate for solar electricity generation.
Okay. What is, uh, can you explain why this must be eight acres, why not one acre? Why can't we just do, or two? Why does it have to be?
Because that would not be a viable project. We couldn't construct it, we couldn't finance it, couldn't do anything, it wouldn't happen.
So, it's, okay, so it's strictly a business decision, it has to be, right now, it has to be eight to make it work?
You could frame it as a business decision, or I could ask you if you want to donate $2 million. It's not.
No, I understand.
It's not a viable.
Yeah, no, I go through that all the time, no.
Yeah.
But, but that's why the eight acres?
Yes.
Okay.
The, and the maximum you run into is one megawatt, I'd love to build more, but I can't, so.
Right.
That's where you.
Okay, no, and you've got to have a threshold, I get that, okay. And you've explained before, but can you explain again to me, because you've stated this is, you know, for, for tax reasons? Can you explain how this is good for Grant financially? You stated it, but do you?
Yeah, so.
No?
So, the 10-acre, eight-acre, whatever it boils down to, that specific area is typically reclassified in a tax perspective from agricultural to commercial, it's double the military, so you're double.
Well, it is commercial, then?
The tax rate, not the zoning.
Oh, the tax rate is, okay.
And that's, that's not something that every jurisdiction does.
Right.
Some jurisdictions leave it agricultural.
Okay.
In terms of the tax rate, some jurisdictions change the tax rate to commercial. That doubles the tax rate on the specific portion of the land that the solar.
Okay, no, no, I understand, because, yeah, and I'll talk about more of that. Okay, A1 and A2 are approximately, I don't know, I'm going to say 80% for Grant, I just, this is a, this is the map.
Mm-hmm.
And you've applied, you've applied, I don't know if they can see this or if they want to get a shot of, but you've applied for A1 and 2 to be basically commercial solar. You know, and that's a lot of area, you know, we can debate whether or not, we can exclude these two certain acres, you know, 40-acre parcels, we can, you know, there's three-phase power, I understand all that. But as Jennifer correctly stated, when we look for a text amendment, this isn't for a specific application, we have to include everywhere, and then we have to come up with our standards as where we are going to allow it. So, we aren't arbitrary and capricious for all the landowners in Grant that could partake of this if they would choose. So, we have about 80% of, I mean, so would, I know you have in your text amendment, you had limited it, I'm not sure we can do that. I haven't really talked to staff too much about it, or attorney.
For what reason?
But my, well, just because, I mean, what's to say 40 acres is the magic number? What's to say one mile apart? So, my question would be, you're, you're limiting it in your application, I get that, okay? Because you're trying to make it look like this wouldn't happen everywhere. But as, sitting up here, I don't know if I can do that. So, you, so you would limit it to just a certain amount of parcels, but do you understand why we would probably not have the same ability or not?
So, what about this? If I can.
Sure.
Ask Mr. Snyder, it, does the city council, if they choose certain performance standards such as, let's say for the sake, sake of example, they decide on 40-acre minimum, one Michael, one-mile setback, is that something that they're allowed to do? Can they, can they choose performance standards for an ordinance?
The city council can choose performance standards for an ordinance.
So, one of the examples that I gave is that Scott County has a two-mile buffer between community solar gardens, not just approved ones, but proposed ones. So, if I propose one and then someone a mile and a half away in Scott County proposed one, their application would get, get tossed out.
Don't you see how that could be looked at as arbitrary and capricious from somebody who wants to get into the solar, you know, solar power?
Legally, legally speaking, arbitrary and capricious, no, because you would have passed it as a city council, so it's your choice if you want to do that or not. Honestly, I, I don't care about the one-mile buffer. Honestly, I don't care about the one-mile buffer.
Right.
That was from the direction, as I understood it, or at least from the concern
Right.
that was expressed by the city council in the 2017 process. We added it to restrict community solar.
Okay. And then something that's kind of out of left field, because, you know, for our ordinance and stuff, our sign ordinance is extremely big in Grant. ridiculously big compared to a lot of other things. Do you know what kind of signs and how big they can be in A2 zones or A1 zones?
In Grants ordinances? I don't know that off the top of my head.
I didn't figure you would, but it's not very big.
Yeah.
And there's not very many. Okay? So, and I think that has to do with the visibility and all that stuff, so.
Right.
Those are a few of my questions. So I thank you for that.
Answer on the project side, the signs that we have, is that...
Oh, no, your signs, yeah, no, I understand. That would have to meet our standards. I get it.
Yeah.
But the visibility of the equipment would, that's kind of where I'm going with that. I'll, we'll talk about that in a little bit.
So long as you, if, so long as you see a bad application, as in not full landscape screening, and you reject it, it wouldn't come to fruition and it would not impact the visibility of Grant.
I got it.
So it's on you, the body, if you were to approve this.
No, I get it. Thank you very much. Okay, I have a couple of things, other things I'm going to talk about here, if that's okay.
Sure thing.
I have no great questions for right now. Thank you.
Please, if you can put that up. And just a second, guys. What we're going to do is, because Tom held up a map and people at home have not been able to see that. Jen, do you still have your PowerPoint on? I wonder if you can, is it possible for you to disconnect that or does Lisa have to do that? Well, we've already got the map up there, so I just want to make sure that we're showing the map up there.
Okay.
Intermittence, yeah. I wonder if we can turn that heat up back there is what I'm thinking. There's not enough...
I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it's ever going to be enough.
We could crank it up a little bit.
All right.
If I have one thing I forgot to talk about in that flurry that we had...
Sure.
Hang on, why don't you jump back up here in a second? Jen, could you move that down a little bit? The pink and the blue, for those at home, the pink and the blue, that's Grant zoning map. So the application that we're looking at tonight encompasses all of that. What Mr. Watts has just said, just to characterize it very quickly, is we could put performance standards in to minimize use. So why don't you stand back up there? Jennifer, thank you so much.
Can I make one clarification, too?
Sure, yeah.
This is not the whole city.
Do I know it? Cut off a little bit.
But it's important because there's in it, in terms of what's proposed in the language, there's quite a bit that is on this eastern edge that would also do damage because of the presence of the county road.
Yes, this should be a full one here.
Do you have the full one? Let me see. Did that come all the way in? Oh, he got Manning. I didn't get Manning. Annie, do you have a question?
No, just to show you the map.
Okay. Well, why don't you get going here? Time's a-wastin'. So, I'm sure, you go ahead. You're going to talk, sorry.
Let's make it quick. We've got to kind of get moving on this a little bit. We're going to be here all night.
That's why I kind of want to ask some quick questions and kind of get in line.
Oh, that's fine. Go ahead. We appreciate that, yep.
So I just wanted to clarify that our perspective is that we're, the application is referencing A1 and A2. That does not mean that the application is considering every parcel in A1 and A2.
No.
Because the application has in it those performance standards. They aren't to be separated unless the city council gives direction to take those out of our application and move forward with it without them.
Yeah.
So we're actually talking about a tiny subset of the city of Grant.
Right, you are. But we might have to consider more.
The application, the application is talking about a subset of that.
Yeah.
The one thing I want to say is, as a group up here, I understand what you're saying. The performance standards that US Solar has proposed create a smaller pieces of those two zones that could be utilized under those performance standards. Things change. We're, what we do up here sometimes is we need to kind of look into the future a little bit and see what's going to be best for our city. That's why we write comprehensive plans that last as long as they do, because we do need to sort of look into the future. And I'll just leave that comment hanging right there, but I do appreciate your comments. I'm going to let Mr. Carr move forward now.
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of blow through this. I've been, I've been in Grant for over 50 years, and I just want to give a little history lesson, not, not history to lessen to anybody, but just a kind of a history for the background of where we got to. So basically, we were, you know, first it was the county and the township, then in 1982, we got our own ordinances. 1998, we became a city to develop less and to stay rural. And that, and the state said, yes. It's amazing. That's what we did, you know? So they allowed us to do that. So, you know, and our, and our comp plan and everything is, you know, why we did that, keep the musoline out. We don't want sewer and water in Grant. We won't, we don't want to develop, you know? We want to stay rural to present, prevent annexations. That's what we did. So what does that mean to Grant? Well, typically, it's been agriculture that's here. We're not, we're pro-ag that's here. We're not promoting agriculture because we're changing and it's in our comp plan. We're going rural residential. That's what it says. So we're changing barns, silos, trees, crops. You know, the history of Grant, we've got the masterman house, which is kind of a cross from where the applique, you know, if you, if this was approved, it would go in. It's historic. You know, we have historic, we have heritage issues in our ordinance that we, you know, that say that there are certain areas that are supposed to stay historic in the area and the buildings. We have that. You know, homes with acreage on it. Traditionally, that's the best way we feel to stay rural. We provides trees, you know, people generally don't mow all their grass. They leave most of it out, you know, and that provides, you know, animals and pollinators and everybody else to be out there. You know, the Gateway Trail goes to Grant. That, and people love the Gateway Trail, most-used trail in the state. And that's, part of the reason is it's driving through all, you know, beautiful Grant, which is kind of like a park. Our comprehensive plan, we've talked about that. I won't beat that to death, but it says scenic views. We can disagree on what it says. But to me, it means scenic views. We can disagree on what the equipment used for your, you know, purpose, how that would affect it. But scenic views to me mean one thing. So it's visibly pleasing. I have some information I'll share. You know, ordinance, what it means to Grant, we keep them the same. We don't like to change. We don't like to provide variances. If we, if we're going to change something, we should just change it in our ordinances. We're not, which is the reason I asked you about variances, if they would be allowed. I've not seen a CUP application, but I know several of the applications that I've seen from other places that I've looked at require eight-foot fencing. Well, that's not allowed in that zone. So that would have to be changed. Other things would have to be changed. So how many more things would have to be changed to make the application go? And if we approve it, there's a semblance of the fact that we want it, so there would be a semblance of the fact that we probably should try to make it work. And so that whole can of worms could come up on a CUP application. You know, and then, and then there's, there's an issue, too. Like we talked about saving farmland. What's the best way to save the farmland? Providing something like this that could keep the farmland, you know, open, rural. In our comp plan, we say we want houses. Financially, we kind of want to have houses. It provides income to the city. It provides getting us closer to 5,000 people. So there's things like that. But things that have kept the farmers here, ag preserve, you know, right-to-farm, you know, green acres, these are, these are basically things that keep Grant rural and allow the farmers that are here to keep their land without selling it off. Average land prices per acre in Grant is $15,000. That's what, that's what the county says. You know, otherwise, we could change. We could allow more commercial use. We could, you know, change the zoning. We could have smaller home lot sizes. You know, if we really want to develop, you're bringing sewer and water. But we haven't done that. We don't want to do that. So that's kind of our rural, you know, flavor that we've gone with, right? Okay, so the current plan of developments are a unique way. Bring in, bring in homes, no sewer and water. It also does some other things. It allows people that want large acreage to live closer to the metro in ways, which reduces their travel time, which reduces the carbon footprint on that. Fewer homes in Grant reduces the carbon footprint because we have fewer homes. We're not highly developed. That reduces the amount of homes, too. For, as far as nature goes, Grant's uneven character in 10-acre parcels, nobody's going to, you know, grade it out flat. That's going to provide raid gardens, a lot of soaking in of water. You've talked a lot about that in your memo, which I'll get to in a little bit. But, you know, that provides us a lot of, you know, natural things that we, you know, and because Grant isn't all corn and everything else and, you know, it provides home for a lot of animals and trees, and it's diverse. The CUP process, you know, again, the only thing I focused on in this, it's great to talk about this, but until we get the application, if we allow it, then we get the application, there could be all kinds of other things that we have to think through on what that actually would mean. I'm just putting it out there. And I can go through a few of them, but, and according to our CUP applications, they have to fit the surrounding area. I mean, that's just, they just do. I mean, that's what it is. And it also, as Jennifer put, talked about, you know, accessory use to a primary use, which in Grant is a house, you know? And so we haven't, you know, we can't build pole barns on properties until the house's permit's pulled. And we don't allow that. So in this, if this application would go in, we would have steel and glass structures. They need to be screened. Rural structures do not need to be screened. We don't screen rural structures. We don't have screening for rural structures in our zone. Rural structures don't need, the very nature of that is what we want. Land use is also, the land use is also classified commercial, as you said, by the assessor. It's also not allowed to be in green acres or ag preserve anymore. They would have to be removed. So that is something that I found out. And talking to our tax assessor, we get little, if any, money tax-wise, very little increase in tax benefit. So we don't really have a tax benefit for putting in this, in this project. I think that's a thing that residents don't understand. They think we may. We don't, not much, from my research. Alvin, Dante County, hey, I talked to him. So you're welcome to talk to him also. So basically then, in my opinion, the decrease, it would be a decrease in rural views for the comp plan. I don't think that is a rural view looking at the project. I just don't. And we haven't talked about that as a council. But if we did allow it for you, then I think we would have to allow it for, you know, for a lot of people. So basically, no, no or small increase in tax revenue. So if I was choosing to allow commercial solar in Grant, you know, with no increased revenue, I would, I would rather do something different and keep it rural than, you know, especially good farmland. That farmland that, that one project's on is really good farmland. I have some stuff I'll talk about in a second here about what people talk about, where this should be done. You know, and then the property around this value, we can, we can talk about, the views will suffer, whether that determines the property value, I don't know. I can't prove that. Yeah, I can't. I can tell you that a lot of people wouldn't like to look at this, the people I talk to, not live next to it. Let's see what else. I'm just swinging through some of my notes because I got a lot, I guess. And then the other thing I talk about is, you know, the memo that we got, which says, you know, the application would be compatible with Grant, you know, I think, you know, I don't think it is. And I think the application should be compatible with Grant, not Grant being compatible with the application, in my opinion. Okay, that's my opinion. I've talked about that before. You talked about in the memo that they don't use public utilities. Well, we don't really have any. So that really wouldn't affect us. Same paragraph you talked about in your memo, ag business opportunities. So yes, it is a business, and yes, it's commercial based on a tax assessor. Ag is promoting Grant. We do not promote business opportunities at Grant. It's not our job to do that. We don't. So I know there was some talk in the memo that we should because of that, but we don't, we don't get into that ourselves. Do not increase residential density was in the memo. It's what, it's what we're going for, based on the comp plan and the ordinances since 1982. We want to, we want to increase our residential density. There's lots of reason for that. I think screening is a, is a long shot and would take a while. So that's my opinion. You said you, if you had some pictures, that'd be great. In Taylor's Falls, the low-growing prairie grass is soon taken over by other hardy weeds and then mowing takes place for the fire department. My research, and I've got some here, talks about that's the primary use of maintaining underneath these panels is mowing. And that causes its own hazards with shrapnel from lawnmowers, et cetera, and herbicides. And I also have some research here in the stack that talks about people saying, once you put in a commercial solar power plant, you're not going back to agriculture. The land is too compacted, there's too many herbicides, there's too many pesticides. All that stuff is impacted in the soil and it doesn't go back. I've also have information in this file that talks about commercial solar installers saying that they're glad this, this one, there was one down in, where was it? Down in southern Minnesota. They were glad it was going in an old gravel pit or wherever because they shouldn't be putting it on good agricultural land. They should find other places for it. And I do, I applaud that. Whether it belongs in Grant, I don't know, but it should be in those spaces. And then one of the things that I, it said in there, they warn, it warns, the comp plan warns us. Our comp plan doesn't warn us against anything. It does, however, point out to keep Grant rural and not in residential, not commercial development. Only rural residential land uses are foreseen as future development in Grant. And that's just, it's right out of the comp plan. So, you know, all of those things added up. I mean, I understand, you know, you're, it's, you know, it's your business and it's what you want to do. I just, from the beginning, I had concerns about it. And it's not even solar. I like solar. I talked about it the last meeting. Allow more solar for residents if they really want it. I just don't see, and I've got a stack of research here, and I'm not going to waste any more time because I didn't know, Jennifer, but I've got stuff here from agricultural, well, the big, the big book is from Preserving Minnesota Agricultural Land Proposed Policy Solutions. These people do not want, they want to preserve the land for agriculture, not for putting in commercial solar. They do, however, say that low-use land, land that can't be used for anything, what you probably used to graze the cows on, right? Because it's too rocky to farm. That's a, that would be a good spot for solar if they had to do something, but they don't, they don't, they don't recommend that. They're looking at the farmer, and they're looking at ag land, they're looking at food. So, you, you quote a lot of people that support this. I understand that it's a business aspect. I get it. But there's also a lot of ag people that want to, you know, they want ag. They don't want, you know, they're looking at other business opportunities for the actual ag or cultural land, other than putting something over it. So, that's what I found. So, I won't waste any more time. I know I kind of rambled on, but I got a whole stack of stuff here. I just, I did a lot of research, more than, more after the last time we talked, just to, just to go through this. But, you know, it's, I don't see any financial benefit for, for one thing, so, that's, that's the other issue that we have to look at, so.
Okay. Now, you, do you want to wrap it up there, Tom?
I'm all wrapped up.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Very good.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
So, the research that Tom did, that, because of time, it's not really appropriate to share, is there a way to get that part of the public record, so we can all? Because my understanding is we're not going to make a decision, but we're going to just take the time to review everything here.
Right. Well, you want me to recap? I'll just briefly go through what I got.
Let me, let me, let me.
You know what? I'll chase you real quick. I do know what you're talking about. And, and my, my, my feeling on this was to turn over our research to staff at the end of this meeting.
Go ahead.
And once we do that, it becomes part of the public record. Are you amenable to that? Are you agreeable to that, to turn that over to you? Or do you want this research? Or how would you like us to make it public? What would be your recommendation? Mr. Snyder?
My suggestion would be, just to continue on to what was suggested there, that, that Tom just identify the large items, brief reference to large items. We hand them to the clerk, and they're part of the record, and we go from there. So, that stack of stuff, if you can give us a table of contents right now, and...
There you go. Quick table of contents, and then we'll...
Oh, you want me to do it now? Okay. All right. Well, I've got my ordinance book with all the signed stuff, plus the zoning, specifically chapter 32. I've got our comprehensive plan. I've got developer agreements from Scandia of all their CUPs.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I thought I was supposed to go through all this.
Do you want to interrupt me for some reason? Let him continue, and then you can ask me.
Yeah. Let me just, I was asked for this, so I got all of that, all the resolutions. I've got green acres and stuff like that. I've got the city of Scandia comprehensive plan, where they actually have a system in Scandia, where they talk about scenic views, and it's a, National Park Service uses the visual quality analysis method. So, they use that. I've got preserving Minnesota agricultural land, which is a really thick book, does not really talk about solar. And this is produced by the publication for the Farmers Legal Action Group in 2012, talking about going forward. I think solar was around somewhat then. It's changed, I understand that. I've got stuff about the benefit of planting trees, not just pollinators, and it's diverse. And I've got all kinds of stuff about scenic views. I've got Minnesota developer sues for a solar garden permit information. I've got solar garden, Minnesota Attorney General pursues complaints. I've got economics of solar communities. I've got solar energy pros and cons. Projects in Janesville, consideration for transferring agricultural land to solar panel energy production. Here's solar panels on farmland stir debate. Here's the guy that just put in, down in Franconia, said, "It's a good use of the land. You don't like to see solar garden go onto nice farmland." Couldn't agree more. I got Michael Allen, a distinguished professor, professor of plant pathology and biology at U.S., UC Riverside, saying, "When a piece of land is developed for solar installation, it's very unlikely to revert to agriculture." I've got natural threats to your residential solar, you know, combat them. Solar panel squirrels and birds, and we're always, you know, we're going to start, you know, killing our birds and squirrels if they're, you know, if they're having problems. Solar grounds vegetation management control, where they're talking about mowing is the most common way they do it. And the Minnesota Public Commission, PUC, Thursday obliged voting unanimously to allow, to allow the incentive, but not the level the advocates wanted. They will not, they're, they're not going to regulate commercial solar power. And I also got evaluation of glare as a hazard for general aviation, and that's five miles, according to them. This is 4.3. So, I didn't want to get into all that tonight, but that's my...
4.3 from what? Lake Elmo Airport?
Lake Elmo Airport. We also have Benson Airport in White Bear Lakes, which, that takes up most of, that takes up most of grant. There's a small corner of grant, and if Somerset has an airport, then that, that's gone too. So, with the five miles, so you get a permit, but you have to, you have to talk to them about it.
You have to go through the FAA process. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I suggest that I will take those to the office, and if any of you would like to come and check that out, you most certainly can. I've killed way too many trees in the last couple of months.
Yeah. Don't kill any trees.
I'm not going to kill anymore.
Don't kill any trees.
Okay. Tom, I'll say Jeff was first.
Just along those lines. Would it be possible just to forward links to these documents, and then publish those links somehow on the city website, so we don't have to kill trees?
I saved the links on Google, a lot of them.
Yeah.
So, you could send me the link, and we'll put that on the website.
And then we all can access electronic...
Then I don't need those. You should take those back.
All there was is, all that was just my research. That's all I have, so.
Okay. We won't make Kim carry the documents.
Yeah, I don't want those.
We'll, we'll give her some electronic links.
Thank you.
Okay. Done. Denny, you're next.
I carried all those in, and it's freezing cold.
Okay. Hang on, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have more? No, I just...
I'm done.
You know what? I'd like to hear from the new guys.
Okay. Go ahead. Let Jeff go. Jeff was done. You had your hand up. Did you want to go next?
No, all I wanted to do is, sorry, all I wanted to do is make sure that if you have the links out there, and it's accessible to everybody, and we don't have to produce nine million pages.
Yeah. I, I don't want to produce, I don't want to produce nine million pages. Let's get, let's get, let's get refocused here for a second, guys. Tom has presented, Tom has brought forward a lot of things, a lot of research, a lot of documents. He's going to provide us electronic copies of that, or electronic links, so that both the applicant and other interested parties can take a look at what Tom has delivered to the council tonight. I'm going to move on from there, and this process seems to be working very well. If we can have a councilman sort of talk with Mr. Watt a little bit, get any issues straightened out with him, have Mr. Watt answer questions, and then present whether their evidence is there. I think that's good. Mr. Watt, I'm not looking for rebuttal on everything that Mr. Carr said, because we'll be here till next week. You have a chance, and through your application, you have laid out what you want to do in the city grant. I understand it implicitly. I understand what you're saying about performance standards. We can do that. We can do all these other things. I also understand some of the shortcomings of some of it, and we'll talk about that when it's my turn to speak. But rebuttal at this point is not really going to be helpful unless I am informed otherwise by, by legal staff. We're going to follow this, follow this method. So, who would like to be next to present evidence? Gentlemen?
I just, we have some questions, if I could.
John? Absolutely. You're up next. Yes. Mr. Rog, you're set.
You know, I, I don't know if I remember asking...
David? I will, I will ask you to step up, just so that people can hear you in the microphone if you ask questions. No, it's okay. Yeah. No, no, jump up. Yeah. Each of us are going to ask you some questions, so when that, when that happens, we'll ask you, you can sit on top of that. People are seeing it. Tom, hang on a second.
I know, I just want to say just one quick thing. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Jeff was asking about me, and Mr. Mayor was totally correct as far as rebuttal, but you, you heard it. I'm imagining we're going to get some kind of written, maybe rebuttal.
Okay. That's, that's helpful, and that will be up to the applicant to do that, if he wishes to do that, and that's completely his choice.
Absolutely.
So, if he wishes to do that. At this point, each, each of us, just to sort of reiterate what we're going to do, each of us have done some research. So, each of us will probably call you up to the microphone one at a time, and just ask you some questions to sort of orient ourselves with the research that we've done, okay? And you'll do the same thing that you did with Mr. Carr when we started, with Mr. Rog right now. And then, and then if I can have you take a seat, then he'll present his evidence, and we'll get a chance to keep moving forward in that fashion. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Real good. Mr. Rog, you're up.
So, I, I, I was listening to your, your presentation, and you listed a bunch of counties that have allowed solar, I believe.
Yes.
In your company, where are your installations?
In many of the, in many of the counties, or cities, or townships that I referenced, and that's why I was able to do them off the top of my head.
So, your company has install, how many installations do you, does your company have?
Under development.
No, in?
In, as in installed.
Right.
Thirteen in the state of Minnesota right now, about twenty in construction, and then about forty that are in development. Forty as in, they're going through use permitting or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and so, how long have these installations been in, in Minnesota?
The longest-standing solar project that's installed in Minnesota was complete in, gosh, sort of, I guess, maybe something like October of 2017, something like that. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date.
Okay. And so, you guys are relatively new in doing these installations?
Well, actually, we've been in the program since it was founded. It's that the community solar program is relatively new.
Okay.
Relatively meaning 2014.
Okay. So, but your, your, your first installation is from 2017?
That's correct.
So, you're just working through the process with, as, as Tom was mentioning, the Excel and other institutions to try to get this worked through the details, right?
Yes, sir. 2014 was when the, the legislation was passed. Excel hadn't created their program or process, and use permit, like permitting jurisdictions didn't consider community solar. A lot of articles, if you did your research, you probably stumbled upon everybody blaming Excel for all the program delays. But, yeah, we've been in it since the beginning, and we're from Minnesota. I'm from Minnesota. We're headquartered here.
So, you're, you're really incorporated as a result of that work from Excel and setting up the performance standards, I guess?
That is the basis on which the company was founded, yeah. We do look at other Midwestern sort of community solar markets that are opening up, but this is by far our flagship. It's also the thing that spurred us to create a company.
So, I know that you say that there's a 25-year lifespan of these solar panels roughly, and then you disassemble them? Or decommission them? How does that work?
So, so the 25 years is, I think what you're referring to with the solar panels, that's the length of the production warranty. So, worst-case scenario is that in your 25, you're producing 80%. That's what the warranty says. But, the 25 years, I think it more so applies to, like, we have a 25-year interconnection agreement, where Excel says, "We'll take the power for 25 years," 25-year land lease, 25-year operations and maintenance contracts, 25-year plus use permits. So, everything is kind of structured around a minimum of 25 years. But that's just a minimum. So, it's possible that these solar gardens would be, depending on how you structure the ordinance, it's possible that they would be around longer than that. Whenever the project ends, 25 years, 50 years, 100 years, never, who knows? Then decommissioning is essentially the reverse order of the construction process. So, you remove the modules, you remove the aluminum racking, you remove the steel I-beams, and then you either resell those. The modules are producing commodity, so however much commodity they produce is their value, or you recycle them, as a lot of the other things are just raw materials that do have value.
So, it's not just 25 years that these panels would be here? You'd like to have them here very much longer? Is that it?
Is, if the ordinance did not have a sunset, as long as we were conforming to the ordinance, and as long as Excel Energy would buy our power, and as long as the landowner would allow us to extend the lease, as long as, as long as we'd be able to find operations and maintenance, we would be open to extending longer. But, all these things are structured around a 25-year initial sunset, at least.
Okay. So, structures, concrete, whatever they're made of?
No concrete.
No concrete. It's just, just metal structures that are I-beams in the ground, whatever? So, there's no maintenance that's going to have to be done after a certain number of years where there's, you know, degradation of those materials? Or no?
It's a great question. We have, you know, we, in Minnesota, we have to deal with things like frost eaves, right? You don't have to deal with that when you do solar in Texas. But here, we have to account for all that. So, that's in the upfront engineering of all these projects. We do totally expect maintenance to be required, so we have planned preventative maintenance four times a year. But then we're also 24/7 monitoring the production remotely. So, if a specific solar panel goes out, let's say hail hit it, and it goes out, you would know that remotely, and you'd have someone come out in a, you know, bucket truck or whatever, and...
Right. I'm just wondering about the structures. You say you got the frost eaves, so you've got to go down at least, you know, five feet or something like that?
Oh, yeah.
With these footings, I-beams?
No footings. Just steel I-beams.
Steel I-beams driven down?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're driven way further than that because of frost eaves, so that we don't have to do maintenance on the actual foundations, the steel I-beams.
Okay. One other question, you said that it's a benefit to the residents of grant. How, how do you define that?
I'd say there are a couple of definitions. One, and perhaps the thing that they're interested in, I don't know, is that residents can subscribe to the community solar garden. They save, you know, 20% approximately on their electricity bill for no upfront cost while supporting local clean energy. It's a pretty cool program, and people are excited about it, believe it or not. There's also the impact to local environment, which, again, the pollinator-friendly is required as part of this ordinance, reduces stormwater runoff, it's a habitat for birds, wildlife, pollinators, et cetera.
Yeah. I was asking about those questions, but thank you for adding that in. So, 20%, and how many people can be subscribed to this, because you're selling your energy to Excel?
So, the electricity goes on to Excel's grid, and then they say, "Thanks for the electricity. We're going to give someone a bunch of bill credits." Literally, reduction items on their bill. Who should we give them to? And so, we have our subscribers, whether they're school districts, cities, or residents or businesses. And the amount of electricity is enough for approximately 220 households from this one single one megawatt, about 220.
Where do you usually sell it to?
We have customers like the University of Minnesota. We have a bunch of residents in Washington and Shisago counties that are just residential Excel users that have signed up.
So, there's no, there's no distance that is required before you, you know, you don't have to be, you know, within a mile, or five miles, or 10 miles. You can be anywhere in Minnesota, really, and, and take advantage of this.
No, but it's a good question. You have to be in the same county or in adjacent county, and within Excel service territory.
So, adjacent to Washington is Ramsey, and Hennepin, and all the big counties, where everybody lives?
Hennepin is not adjacent to Washington.
No, you'd have to, you'd have to jump over.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Washington, Ramsey.
Dakota.
Ramsey's mostly not Excel, though.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of it isn't. You're right.
Okay. All right.
So, we do have a lot of residential customers in, like, Washington and Shisago, that kind of area.
A lot of people in Washington County.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. So, you know, for the number of people in Washington County and the adjacent counties versus grant, where it's located, you know, benefits aren't going to grant in particular?
I would definitely not say that.
No?
I personally wouldn't say that. I mean, if you want to take aside the local environment piece, which is a direct benefit to grant, which is a private investment, which I don't think you should do, but let's do it for a second, I think that still, anyone in grant who wants to subscribe, we're not going to turn them away for no reason. We, we typically see a higher subscription rate from the communities in which the garden is located. And I think that makes sense.
So, 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 your business, and you sell the energy to Excel for X, and then you give X minus something to the residents?
No.
So, you make a profit. Obviously, you're a business.
We make a profit, yeah. We give the, basically, we give the electricity to Excel, and Excel says, instead of paying U.S. solar, they have all these bill credits. Where should they go? The bill credits go to you, Councilmember Rog, if you're, if you're a subscriber, you get that bill credit, say it's for 100 bucks, and then you pay us 80 bucks. You just profited 20 bucks. If your 80 bucks and everyone else's 80 bucks is enough to make more money than the cost of installing the solar garden, then we profit. And that's the whole business model, is that subscribers benefit, landowner benefits, developer benefits, Excel benefits from upgraded utilities, local environment, yeah.
And so, of your, of your installations that have been around since 2017, are you making money?
Yes, we...
Are you profitable? If we saw your balance sheet, are you profitable?
The cost of a solar garden is not offset in two years of operation, but with our financing, yes, our company is healthy right now.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah. With financing, yeah. Okay.
Right. We, we can't make the investment out of our own pockets for every single community's solar garden, so we do have investment, yeah, finance parties.
All right. Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, John. Who's next? Denny? Jeff?
I'll go next.
Why don't you stay out there, Jeff?
It's not one, well, I'll ask my question of you first, and then, and then other things that are just more statements. You said the vast majority of jurisdictions permit solar operations on agricultural land. You named off a bunch of counties. I didn't really hear any cities or municipalities. Can you have the, can you recite any of the verbiage of just one of those counties, so we can hear specifically what's meant by their, their approving this on agricultural land?
So, I don't have the verbiage, but what I mean by that is that for jurisdictions, cities, townships, counties, that permit community solar, the ones who have looked at this and said they want to adopt community solar, including all of those ones I listed, they have all chosen, these ones I've listed have all chosen, that A1, A2, whatever their equivalent of that is, for agricultural land, that's in the C, conditionally allowed of their table of uses. So, in some places, this is considered an essential service, and it doesn't go through CUP process. But in most places, it's a conditional use, and in most places, for the vast majority of those places where it is a conditional use, it's on ag land specifically.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's all I have for you. I do have some, some comments.
Okay.
I think the, the research that was done by Tom was pretty comprehensive, so I'm going to try to skip over a lot of the stuff that's read on it, but I didn't want to call out some, some of the things that, the concerns and statements I had. Regarding the, the letter U.S. solar sent to the Grant City Council, there's a lot of subjective and unsubstantiated statements, and I think Jennifer has addressed some of them. I'd like to talk about some of them myself. Some of the claims in there, so, the first one, "Majority of citizens approve of commercial solar power in Grant." That was based on a poorly worded petition with 194 signatures, which is certainly not a majority. I've personally spoken to over 200 citizens during my campaign for city council in Grant, and there are only a handful that were in favor of commercial solar operations. The vast majority said they opposed it because they did not want their property values to go down. go down. The next claim was increased tax base. We already talked about that. The claim was because it was going from agriculture to commercial, so that kind of, right there, that says that this is not agricultural land anymore. So that's kind of a self-defeating argument. And also, real estate studies have shown that commercial solar operations have reduced property values, which decrease the tax base. And I think, hopefully, one of the real estate agents on this, Council might have more information on that. The next claim, "Enhanced air, soil, and water quality. Goals 2, 3, and 6 of the comp plan that speak to preserving the rural character and protecting the natural resource base of the community," which is what you referenced in your letter. Well, when you look at that, how is concrete, glass, metal, and wire going to benefit the environment? So it's kind of a contradictory goals, you're saying that you're addressing those goals or meeting those goals when you're putting in concrete, glass, metal, and wire, which is not agriculture. Also from the comp plan, on page 13, I'm just going to cite some specifics from the comp plan that address the rural character and what we mean by that. "Past actions of the Town Grant Board and Planning Commission favored low-density residential and agricultural development over industrial, commercial uses. This policy is widely supported by the citizens of Grant and likely to be turned into the future." Page 31, "As stated, only rural residential land uses are foreseen as future development within Grant. Commercial development is restricted to the existing general business core area, and no further industrial development is anticipated in Grant." From page 32, "No new commercial land has been added to the official land use map. However, those areas already within the general business district have been identified. Expansion of these businesses will be limited to uses compatible with rural lifestyle and alignment with design standards present within the subdivision ordinance." Back to another claim in the letter, "Not a commercial industrial use." Your definition you're using was a footnote from the Power of Minnesota video, that because there's no storefront, permanent structures, noise, or billboards, it's not commercial. Conveniently, the visual aspect was left off of that definition. I think the more common definition of commercial use is "real estate intended for use by a for-profit business," which this is. If this is not to be considered agricultural, why would you need to screen it? Because it's not a field of corn or just pollinator-friendly habitat. It's a commercial operation made of concrete, glass, metal, and wire. It's commercial in usage it looks, and thus, in my opinion, would belong in a commercial Solar, I would consider solar energy systems to be in the same category as wind energy conversion systems, and our comp plan limits them to one per parcel. You can reference that in comp plan section 32-35. And we talked a little bit about the other communities such as Scandia, Afton, Dundas, Norfield, Goodhue County, et cetera, that have determined commercial solar operations are too hard to screen, and I think we can learn from them to avoid making some of the mistakes. Scandia, in September 2017, the city council repealed an ordinance that allowed commercial solar operations. Quoting from City Commissioner Neil Scott, "Some people objected to them, they feel that they are a blight on the rural landscape of Scandia. Scandia then revised their ordinances to mirror, coincidentally, our current ordinances allowing for individual, i.e. non-corporate use." Mendina, Mendina determined that commercial solar operations can only be in the business district. Dundas, from article in the Norfield News by Philip Way, September 11, 2018, "City of Dundas leaders pass an ordinance to disallow freestanding solar energy facilities to be established in city limits. Solar as an accessory use such as panels on a home or business is still permissible." Goodhue County, from the Post Bulletin article by Brian Stott on September 15, 2018, "The Goodhue County Board Throws Shade on Solar Plans. Commissioner Barry Nessus said he does not want to support solar energy because mandates that have helped the alternative energy boom are partly responsible for increased electrical rates. Quote, 'I'd rather not be a part of the problem, I'm not a big renewables fan because all it does is cost people more money.'" He pointed to his own business experience running a grocery store. He said that when he bought his store, he paid $800 a month for 23,000 kilowatt hours of power. Fifteen years later, he paid $2,500 a month for almost half of that. So there's some more financial implications in the cost of the taxpayers, and this is why I want to bring this out, because you have mentioned that it's going to be financially beneficial to the citizens of Grant. In my research, I found the exact opposite. From a Star Tribune article by Mike Hewlett, December 27, 2018, "We are really concerned that this would turn out to be expensive program, Excel CEO Ben Folk said in a recent interview. And it has become just that with costs flowing down to ratepayers," he said. "Under the solar garden program's design, Excel passes down its power buying costs to all Minnesota ratepayers. Quote, 'We will socialize $85 million of the community solar program this year,' Folk said, referring to costs passed down to ratepayers. Next year, it will be twice as much. That $170 million in costs in 2019 is expected to translate into $39 per year for the average residential customer, according to Excel. The charges run through the field rider on customers' bills, which primarily includes pass-through costs for natural gas and coal." Excel's proposed value of solar rate for projects approved in 2019 has fallen to 10.46 cents per kilowatt hour, a value that has solar garden developers in an uproar. Several have filed objections with the PUC over Excel's proposed rate, saying it's so low that they will have great difficulty securing financing for new projects. Quote, "This precipitous drop in the 2019 VOS rate threatens to eliminate new solar garden applications altogether by making the projects unfinancable," a group of solar developers said in the recent PUC filing. That's the end of that article. The point of me mentioning this is to illustrate the fact that without government money injected, this is not really profitable or good for the citizens. If I may quickly go through a couple, one more article.
Sure, of course.
The Center of American Experience article by Isaac R. Data, September 28, 2018, "First and foremost, Minnesota's community solar installations are a mess. These solar installations are small, inefficient, and expensive. According to the article in the Star Tribune, Excel Energy currently purchases power from the solar gardens at a price of 13.5 cents kilowatts per hour, which is 4.3 times more expensive than electricity generated at the Sherburne County coal-fired plant in 2016. What's worth community solar is more expensive than other forms of solar. For example, utility-scale solar can take advantage of economies of scale. Excel produces solar electricity for costs between 7.5 cents and 8.5 cents per kilowatt hour, which is still about 2.5 times more expensive than electricity from the Sherburne County coal-fired plant." The Star Tribune article also states that the community solar initiative costs Excel, and therefore, electricity consumers, about $85 million per last year, and these costs are expected to double to about $170 million in 2019. According to the utility, this increase in costs will result in customers paying an extra $39 a year. It is important to note that the extra costs associated with community solar will not be transparently displayed on electric bills, they will be hidden in the fuel cost surcharge, which primarily includes the pass-through costs for natural gas and coal. Excel opposes community solar gardens largely because they have no financial incentive to support them. Although Excel's opposition to community solar may stem from a rational interest, the utility company isn't wrong. The community solar is a bad deal for Minnesotans, no matter how renewable energy advocates try to spin it. The cost of community solar is 655% more expensive than the savings it would provide." I'm almost done here. Electric companies in Minnesota, government-approved monopolies that are guaranteed to make a 10% profit in every single dollar they spend in infrastructure, which means ratepayers must pay for the fixed costs of coal and natural gas power plants regardless if they're used or not. At the end of the day, community solar costs 655% more than it saves. The community solar program means Minnesota's building solar power in one of the most expensive ways possible, which is why we should dismantle this wasteful program as soon as possible. If nothing else, the high cost of community solar should have its own line item electricity bill of every Excel Energy customer. After all, sunlight is the best disinfectant, right? Well, that's the end of the article, and I have to say, I agree with the points in there, that financially speaking, it does not make sense to the taxpayers, and it could cost us much more money than it purports to save. So that's all the comments I had.
Okay. And you have said earlier that you have electronic link stores, you can forward those to the applicant and others who wish to take a look at that. Very good. Mr. Schneider, did you have anything? I thought I heard you down there.
No, you didn't hear me. If, I was just asking if the applicant has any commentary on that or anything else that's been heard to point to this point.
I'm not going to look for rebuttal quite yet, if that's all right. During the end, if David would like to come up and kind of speak to some of the concerns that we've raised, otherwise, it just gets to be too long. He looks like he's a pretty fast typer out there, and I think he's getting a lot of this stuff down. So, at the end, I'd like to bring Mr. Watts up and just kind of give us an overall take on how you feel about some of the comments that you've heard and the research that the council has provided to you. So, at this point, I'm going to go to our last member, Mr. Kopp, and ask him to, if you have questions for Mr. Watt, we're going to have Mr. Watt come up again after he's done finalizing his notes there. You good? Okay. Did you have questions for Mr. Watt?
Not a question, just some input, some thoughts. Personally, I think that there are certainly applications where solar generation makes sense. Our own comp plan on page 18-2A says, "New subdivisions must pay attention to street, lot, and building orientation for solar access." At the end of the day, what matters here is, does it fit the comprehensive plan? As I go through the rest of our comprehensive plan, as an example, page 32A, under land classification, talks about protecting existing ag uses. Page 36, "Enhance rural character, preserve and enhance rural character." Page 60, "Maintain rural quality of life." Page 74, "Protect natural amenities and the scenic views. Naturally conform to the dictates of the land." On page 77, "Visual rural character." On page 88, "Under land use and development, our city deserve, its intent is to preserve open space, minimize conflicts between ag and residential uses." On page 81, "We are to preserve and protect ag land and facilitate ag lifestyle, encouraging hobby farms and commercial ag use within the city." I'm just not certain that it fits that.
Okay. Are you all set? You're all done? Okay, real good. David, not too many else to take there. I've got some questions for you. If you wouldn't mind stepping up, and I'll try to finish this up, and I know that Jen wanted to speak after we're done, and of course, we're going to give you some time after Jen is done to come back up and sort of go through your notes and answer some of the things that you've heard here tonight, okay? All right, sounds fair. Question for you. Has US Solar already sold subscriptions to any proposed installations in Grant?
To a proposed installation?
Yeah. Have you sold any subscriptions regarding the installations that you've proposed in the past in Grant?
The subscriptions are not, at the time of signing, are not locked into a specific solar garden, so the question doesn't really have an answer.
Okay. Well, let me rephrase it then, and perhaps we can get a little bit closer to the point of my question.
Okay.
When you sell your subscriptions, then, they are sold on a basis of the entire holdings, if it's fair to say, that holdings of solar gardens that US Solar holds, right? If they are not sold, they're not, you never sell them by saying, "We are building a solar garden in X area, would you like to buy a subscription to that power?" That is never done?
We don't market that, we don't market that way unless we only have one, like, one solar garden that would be eligible for that subscriber. Say we're up in Clay County, and there aren't a bunch of them to subscribe to, so maybe they would just subscribe to the one. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Real good. That's what I wanted to know. You've said that, and in the letter from your attorney, I believe his name is Bruce, Bruce said that, and you said in your opening comments, that this is an agricultural use, and it's really unreasonable to characterize it as industrial for some of the reasons that you've stated, and some of the reasons that Bruce stated in his letter. I understand that. But is that a universal understanding among solar power producers that you're aware of? Are they all agricultural? They all describe their solar gardens as agricultural?
No, because not all solar production, not all solar-producing facilities are required to have pollinator-friendly habitat, so if it was a gravel pit with solar on it, for example, that would not be an agricultural use, and the owner of it wouldn't be delusional enough to think it was.
Sure. Who requires you to have pollinator-friendly habitat? Where is that required?
Minnesota state statutes passed in the legislature.
Thank you.
I believe the specific statute was referenced in the letter by Mr. Bedwell, but I'm not sure.
Okay. I just, I can't write as fast as you can type, so give me a second.
Not saying I have many skills, but that's one of them.
Yep. Mr. Carr had touched really quickly on the fire hazards, and you had said that there are best practices in order to disconnect those panels from the grid. Is that correct? If there were a grass fire, you know, July, you can disconnect those panels from the grid quickly.
Yeah, for any reason, there is a disconnect, just emergencies in general.
Okay. But you cannot disconnect the panels themselves from producing electricity during that fire? They will produce electricity.
Oh, no, they don't produce electricity. It's, I believe the disconnect, like, interrupts the circuit for each panel, so there's no production, it's not going anywhere.
It's not going anywhere.
It's basically a total shutdown, as far as I understand it.
Let me, yeah, let me just re-characterize that remark. I have solar panels, and when they're in the sun, there's no way to shut them off. They're still producing the power, you may not take them from the panel, down the wire to the inverter house, and then up the pole to the grid, but they're still producing power if sunlight's hitting them. The only way to stop them is to get them out of the sunlight, so...
I think that's true of your solar panels.
Yeah, it is true. They continue to, they continue to make electricity if they're there. So, it's interesting to me, I have talked to several fire officials, and they have some concerns on that, but none unfortunately that we're going to be able to reference tonight. That is of concern to me. Talk to me about, on these one-megawatt solar installations, what are the maximum number of poles and utility buildings? Talk to me about the utility buildings that will be used to feed the grid from those.
No utility buildings, three poles.
Okay. Where's the inverter to change it from 12-volt DC to the AC power?
It depends on the design. We use string inverters, so they're like very small inverters along each one of the tracker tables. So there are, in the facilities that we're constructing right now, just for example, the one megawatts have 40 string inverters, and they're, you know, about this tall.
Yeah, they're not real big.
Inside of the facility, and not visible.
Yeah. And three poles, you said?
Three interconnection poles to be owned by the utility company.
Explain that. You had mentioned earlier that there's a mandate for solar energy. Who is mandated to produce this electricity? Walk me through that mandate. Who's mandated?
So, the mandate was from the Minnesota State Legislature, and it was for investor-owned utilities specifically to produce, I don't remember the percentage, of solar electricity by 2020.
Okay.
That is not what created this program. This program was created by Excel Energy as a method of helping them reach that mandate.
Sure, meet that mandate, but let's stick with the mandate for just a second, okay? Let's not go past that to the program. The program, I think I understand it now. You give me a little more information on that, I think I've got it. The mandate is actually then the legislature has mandated investor-owned utilities, Excel probably being the largest in Minnesota that I'm aware of, to develop, and I forget the percentages, that's why I read it, I forgot it. To develop a certain amount of renewables by a certain date. So, the state mandates Excel, no one else is mandated to produce this.
That's not true. Any investor-owned utility.
Any investor-owned utility, which I had already stated. My point is, cities are not mandated, no one is mandated, other than the investor-owned utilities, correct?
That is, you're only mandated to provide solar access, or something like that.
Solar access. As our comp plan, as Mr. Kopp had just read, our comp plan is guaranteed access through the direction of the Metropolitan Council. In 1978, we were required to maintain that access for individual solar power generation for each homeowner. Okay, good. It's mandated. You know, I was surprised to hear you say that, in many cases, I think that you did qualify your statement, that commercial tax rates apply. Tell me about that. How does, how do those apply? When do those apply to you? Is there a certain set of criteria where they apply to you? Educate me on that.
So, it's actually, it's sort of weird, there's a, the regulation on it basically says that a jurisdiction such as the city of Grant could increase the tax rate for such a project from agricultural to commercial, because the revenue generated is commercial, even if the use and zoning and anything else is agricultural. It's a question of revenue, because it's a tax question, and we are making revenue like a commercial entity, although I will also remind you that agricultural uses are also businesses.
Interesting. So if those commercial tax rates are applied to you, and then, do you know offhand, and you might not know this, but offhand, how many of your, you obviously have some experience in it, and you've probably been through this, how many of those installations that you talked to with Mr. Rog about, how many of those are commercially taxed at this point?
To be honest, I don't know. I developed the projects, I don't, I'm not asset management. I would guess, I would guess at least half, and I know that of those that have gone through this process, most of them intend to, even though I don't look at the follow-up on the tax statements and stuff.
Well, the taxes are important to cities. I mean, you think they probably are going to do that. That would just make sense, right?
Yeah, if it's allowed, I wouldn't know why not to do that.
Yeah. So, I read Bruce's letter with interest, concern, and he was very strident in his point that classifying this as anything other than agricultural was unreasonable, could not be justified. Unreasonable is the word I read several times. It's interesting that what is being generated is creating revenue so that commercial taxes can apply to it, and I know that you're not in asset management, and I wish that you were, because I have a question that's going to refer back to asset management, maybe even your legal staff. If commercial tax rates are being applied, and it sounds as though they are, have you applied to reverse those? Have you sued to have them characterized as unreasonable? I mean, have you tried to have those taxes reversed? They're agricultural, you should be taxed on an agricultural basis.
We haven't.
Which is a different basis, as you know.
It is. The use and the zoning and the tax classification are not always equal, and so, for that reason, we haven't sued, because those can be different. In this case, you could have agricultural use and zoning and a commercial tax classification, and there would be no issue in the eye of the law, or planners, or et cetera.
Would you agree that sometimes those classifications and the reasoning that cities or tax professionals may use, appraisers, assessors, those, that set of reasoning and those set of facts may correspond or even overlap?
I think the tax is strictly a question of revenue, because that's what taxes are, and I think that use is a question of what's happening on this property, and how does it impact the city. The impacts are to the local environment, and the, in Tom's point, visibility, whether you think of that as you're looking at more trees because of the screening, or whether you are peering over that and seeing the solar panels.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, okay. That's interesting. I think that that tax question is an interesting question. You've got, John did talk to you about the amount of installations you have. You guys have been busy people, you've been running around putting these up pretty quick. Good for you. How many of the solar panels that you placed in Minnesota so far were actually produced in the US?
Probably none.
Probably none. Where were they produced?
The market leaders in the globe of solar panel production are places like Singapore...
Who's the biggest? You know this.
Probably China.
Probably China. Yeah, not probably. China is by far and away the largest producer of these. And what did you say that you're guaranteed from the manufacturer on these? How long was that?
It's 25 years for 80% production.
25 years for 80% production, so we're counting on China to be there in 25 years to guarantee these. Talk to me about recycling panels, and what panels have in them, and I know that you're not, you're here as a business representative, David, and I'm not going to hold you to this, I'm not going to go down this road very far, but I've done the research, and I know what's in those panels. And when they're taken down in 25 years, who handles the recycling of that? Do they just go to the local landfill, or they go to the recycling truck, like my recycling, my paper and plastic does, or where do they go?
So, there's a really important first part of that question, which is about what's in the panels. Can I ask, are you referring to like thin film panels, cadmium? Because there's, there have been, either in the past or as part of solar projects, which actually reflects the sun to a central point, like you'll see in like Nevada, for example.
Yeah, those big boilers, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that can sometimes have cadmium, which is classified as a hazardous material. Any solar panel that's used in the state of Minnesota, any tier-one solar panel which we're required to use, you know, by our financial partners and by... panel which we're required to use, you know, by our financial partners and by others, have zero hazardous materials in them, they're not considered a hazard at all, I guess, it's mostly glass, silicon, copper, aluminum, and so those materials are all raw, materials which can be recycled in the worst-case scenario, but we would anticipate to actually resell the solar panels for whatever portion of the commodity they're supposed to produce.
Yeah, that they're, I mean, if they're doing 75%, you cut the price and sell them at 75%.
Yes, sir.
Makes sense, I don't leave yet. Okay, David, I think I've asked the questions that I need to ask you to kind of go through the evidence that I have here, thank you very much for that, and then, like I say, at the end, don't leave, Jennifer said she wanted to say some things, then we're going to have you back up to kind of give a closing statement to us, okay?
Thank you, sir.
So, hang on here, I'm going to just characterize the documents, I'm going to go through real quickly for us all, I have the work session discussion, Scandia, August 2, 2017, I have the city council minute meeting, September 19, 2017, Scandia City Council, I have Sandy, City of Scandia ordinance number 187, an ordinance repealing chapter two and the findings, I will be reading that to you, I have the ordinance that they used to replace the repealed ordinance, I will be reading a section of that to you tonight. I will move on from that and read a section of the Medina ordinance regulating ground mounted solar panels, I will move from that to the First Judicial District Court, Good Hugh, Minnesota, 1011, 2017, and I will give you the case numbers on that, I will be reading from that case and some of the findings of Wakota Township and the lawsuit filed by Greenmark Solar against Wakota Township and how that ended up, after that, I will go to the Star Tribune, December 26, 2015, article regarding solar power boom in Shisago County creates winners and losers, I will then show a number of homes that were purchased and then sold adjacent to some of those solar facilities up there and the effect as a Realtor for 21 years that I see happening there, people will need to make up their own judgments, a lawyer and a Realtor have something in common, they give price opinions, they do not put anything in concrete, you have an opinion, and that's how I will present that information, starting with the work session discussion at Scandia, Scandia, as you know, we talked about this a little bit earlier, touched on it, was talking about repealing their solar ordinance, they have a number of megawatts of solar installations in Scandia, I will read from the discussion on community solar farms ordinance, council member Cromer said that he has concerns about environmental impacts with questions that should be answered before approving more, councilman Mayor Hagland said that solar development seemed to be an aggravation, remove property from the market that could be developed and the city should go out of the solar business completely, Mayor Mesky said that initial intent of the solar ordinance was to provide an alternative, farmers from selling off their land for development, however, that has occurred in 16% of the community solar gardens that have been approved, administrator Soltis provided an air overview of Scanda, Scandia, pardon me, and he added that the screening requirements have evolved from screening from the road to screening from adjoining properties, at this point, Soltis explained that the six solar gardens already approved by conditional use permits would be allowed to be built, the implications of repealing could be a loss of revenue stream collected by additional solar energy production taxes, the six approved solar gardens, the six approved solar gardens that were going to be built totaling 20 megawatts are projected to provide $8,000 per year to the city once they're producing, Mesky, the mayor, said that having six solar gardens shows that Scandia has done its part in providing for green alternative energy, Mesky called for a vote on the above motion, motion carried three to one, this was the work session discussion that I am reading to you, the mandate that I asked you about before, Mr. Watt, and I'm going to relate some of the things that we talked about a moment ago with some of the things I'm going to read to you, where the mayor says they've done their part, there is no part for any city to do, there is no mandate for any city or municipality to do, XL Energy and investor-owned electricity providers have a duty, we do not have that duty, we have a duty to look out for our citizens and follow the plans and the zoning that we have, now, I'm going to jump right into the September 19, 2017 city council meeting, Mayor Mesky agreed that now is the time to halt further solar projects until all implications are known, sorry, until implications are known, she said she would be in favor of reworking language to allow accessory solar work for small projects, but there are still too many unknowns, interesting, councilmember Schneider said he's against telling people they can do with their land, but doesn't want to drop the ball on solar, he said if repealed, they must immediately talk about how to get it rolling again, that's reasonable, I think, when I read it, he seems reasonable, councilmember Hagland said solar gardens ruin the rural nature of the community and detract from the views of Scandia, technology is constantly changing, there may be something else in the future to replace solar, Hagland said it's time to pull the pin and see what develops, that repeal passed three to two, moving into the ordinance number 187, the actual ordinance repealing chapter two, section 4.34 of the Scandia Development called, the findings, I think these are very important for us all to hear, the findings, they found four different distinct things that they were concerned with, whether the continued expansion of the use will negatively impact the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity of solar projects, whether the use may have negative impacts on the value of nearby properties, which impacts will not be known until there are sufficient real estate transactions completed after the current solar farms and community solar gardens are constructed to determine the impacts, whether the use will negatively impact the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the applicable zoning districts, and whether the impacts of the development of additional community solar farms and community solar gardens will conflict with the vision expressed in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, that Scandia maintains its unique rural character, agricultural heritage, historic charms and natural resources based on the civic experience with the difficulties of screening this use from public roadways and surrounding properties, I forgot to mention, I have about 50 pictures up here of the screening in Scandia and other projects, I put a couple hundred miles on my car, I think, taking pictures of these things, screening them seems to be problematic, um, buh buh buh, moving forward to, oh, Medina, sorry, I'm going to take a drink here, I'll just read Medina's real quick, 82809 sub two, ground mounted solar equipment, following standard shall apply, ground mounted solar equipment should only be permitted in the business and industrial parks in any districts and only following conditional use permit approval, solar equipment must be set back a minimum of 300 feet from any residential property, so, obviously Medina, and David, you haven't been here that long, but Medina is, is a community on the far western edge that is, is very similar to us, and the fact that they're horse farms, agriculture, they've got sort of some upper bracket housing and, and a good mix of housing, but their development has been along our lines, they're pretty conducive to Grant, Grant and Medina, I mean, I know they're miles and miles apart, but very, very close in character, if you will, moving on from that, I'm going to jump into, and let me set the stage a little bit, there's a township in Good Hugh County called Wakota Township, W-A-C-O-U-T-A Township, they had a company by the name of Greenmark Solar want to build a solar power plant down there, and they argued that, I'm just going to read some of these, and again, I'll give you all this, so this is going to be pulled, Greenmark argues that solar energy is, I quote, inherently agricultural, end quote, argued before the township board that a primary intent of the project was to serve the agricultural community, the board found that in its March 28, 2016 application, Greenmark stated something different. And right now, I'm reading from the opinion by the judge in the case, Douglas C. Bailey, the judge of the district court, the strongest argument Greenmark made to the board is that the community solar garden will be less than 40% solar panels in the rest area, over 60 use for pollinator habitat, this argument was presented to the township board and the township board found that while an ancillary effect of this may be the improvement of its status as being another pollinator habitat, this is only an incidental effect, not a factor that proves that it is primarily intended to support any agriculture, jumping down, the primary intent of a community solar garden, which is to produce utility-scale solar energy to be exported to the grid, as they themselves stated in their application for the county CUP, which I'm going to read, so when Greenmark Solar came in and actually put in their application, they were very honest, in fact, I think they kind of let the cat out of the bag, the board found that, I quote, in its March 28, 2016 application, Greenmark stated that the purpose of the project was, I quote, to generate utility-scale power using solar energy to be exported directly to the electrical grid, just like ours, here's the Community Guide to Solar Rewards Community Guidebook put out by XL Energy, I did just a little bit of research, a normal home in Minnesota, let's call it average, 817 kilowatts per month, so 9,804 kilowatts per year, that means that the one megawatt plant that we were originally talking about, and I realize that's not part of this, but, that would power 102 homes, so, obviously, it's utility-scale power generation, and as the judge found in Wakota County, when Greenmark kind of let the kitty cat out of the bag and told them what they were really proposing, which again was generating utility-scale power using solar energy to be exported directly to the electrical grid, they knew what it was, that in conjunction with the tax treatment of it tells me sort of what I'm dealing with there, and that was in their, their own words. Okay, let me jump, oh, that's US Solar, oh, you answered that, yeah, well, I will read that, Bruce, Bruce, Bruce was, was quite specific, contrary to the previous contention from city officials, Bruce, your lawyer there, corporate counsel, solar gardens are not a commercial or industrial use, they seem to be according to the judge in Good Hugh County, but I'll leave that to the lawyers to debate, again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm going to read just real quickly from David Chaffee for Star Tribune, December 26, 2015, solar power boom in Shisago County creates winners and losers, first line, among those worried about a drop in property values, your homeowners are Rick and Cheryl Ramberg, the largest product, the largest project, North Star Solar, trying to appease unhappy homeowners have, have agreed to buy their properties, the first US solar project to take such a step, the developer says, now, these properties, it's very important to understand for everyone listening to me, were not being sold to put solar panels on, they were being sold because the property owners weren't happy about seeing solar panels, had nothing to do with producing energy for these, six other homeowners will be hemmed in by North Star Solar to the north and another solar project to the south with the potential for more solar to the west, angry they're not getting buyout offers, these homeowners say solar panels will be visual intrusions, diminish property values, include wall-off wildlife with eight-foot fences and post health risks from magnetic fields, I added the fences, they have to have that, eight-foot fences, that wasn't in the article. So, now the fear is that solar fronts will hurt nearby property values, community energy plans to sell the seven acquired homes to new owners, that could reveal whether a surrounded by solar price difference exists, and I think that's something that we need to know, whether or not a house that can see solar panels or a house surrounded by them is going to show a difference in price, and here's an interesting quote, do people expect there might be a difference, well, of course, end quote, said county assessor John O'Keefe, start quote, the only way you can quantify it is through sales, interesting, so, the county assessor says, is there going to be a difference, well, of course, the only way you can quantify it is through sales, makes sense, that's the only way to quantify whether or not real estate has been moved from a free and open exchange of real estate for cash in, in a non-imposed environment where there is no detriment to it, is to look at the comp, the comps over time so that you can determine whether or not there's been some sort of a problem with, with the property, and whether or not it has been affected by whatever's going on around it, I'm going to give MLS numbers out on some of these properties so that you can look them up, and these MLS numbers, David, will be available through the clerk and you can pull them up easily, this one first is a single-family property in North Branch, was purchased by CES LLC, which is the holding company for the utility company, you probably know who they are, bought this property, 9.28 acres, built in 2005, you know, 2,300 square foot, nice place, got a great big pole barn on it, what is this pole barn, yeah, 48, 48 by 60 pole barn, ready for, in for heat, nice looking place, they paid 324,950 for it, okay, when they sold it 15 months later to a new buyer, they lost 210,050 when they sold it, which I thought was interesting, the thing that I really thought was interesting though, because again, those prices are just opinions, David, again, opinions, you can't, you can't lay concrete forms in there, but I'm going to show a bit of a trend that I think people might find interesting, here's all the pictures when they were marketing the house, it's a pretty house, nice looking house, let's look at some more pictures, interior shots, nice looking house, more interior shots, nice looking house, and again, you'll be able to see all this, the one thing that you don't see in any of those photos, the Realtor was apparently trying to hide something, because that's the house, there's the house with the solar panels to the side, so the Realtor didn't think it was a good idea to actually show the solar panels in his marketing documents, which I thought was interesting of that Realtor to do that, but when they sold that house 15 months later, they sold it for a loss of 210,050, now, draw your own conclusions, I'm not making conclusions from it, number two, we've got 37083 Keystone Avenue in North Branch, this one's sold for 252,290, six acres, this one's older, 1964, interesting, yeah, 252,290, they lost in, hmm, about 11 months, 50,210, these guys were honest, this Realtor was honest, I didn't put up, print out the pictures on this one, because he showed it, he showed it, this was a good Realtor and I think he was very honest in showing those photos, here's another one, single-family property, this one's really nice, 2001, three-level, 2,150 total finished square feet, 10 acres, four bedroom and three bath, three-car insulated, 4828 pole barn, insulation, heat, concrete floor, nice, and of course, 10 acres again, this one experienced a loss of 38,800, and that occurred in, yeah, just over a year, 13 months, they lost 38,800, here's the pictures on this one, you can see the exterior of it, little bit of interior shots there, again, nice looking house, got the pole barn, the whole bit, interior shots, I'm not going to show you anymore, we run out of time, no more interior shots, what they forget, forgot to mention on this one as well, the real estate agent was any shots of the solar installation around it, that one lost 38,000, this one's interesting, this one lost 36,996 in one year, 2002, four-bed, three-bath, two-car garage split, 10 acres, 2,767, 2677 square foot, it's a nice home, 10 acres, outbuilding with nine-foot ceilings, power, concrete floor, water, now, this is interesting, I want everyone to listen to this, the buyer of this property will acquire a lease on the south, 6.24 acres, the lease pays a thousand dollars an acre totaling 6,240 per year with a yearly increases of 1%, so 6,240 will be paid per year, the property taxes on this home when sold were only 4860, so, they're making, they're paying no property taxes and they're making another, what, 1,500, 1,600 off of that, very interesting, this house, again, lost 36,996, but the interesting part about this house, and I have pictures of this house, I went up and looked at this house, tried to walk around, I couldn't because the eight-foot fence was there, but I took some great pictures, there's that house, completely and totally blocked from any solar panels, you can't see it at all, the only time you ever notice, you're living with solar panels around you, is when you drive out, it's interesting, completely screened, screening that the pictures that I took show are really not possible with most of these things, and, so that house is completely screened, pays no property taxes and still lost that amount, I, I thought that's just very interesting and, and something that people might want to pay attention to, I also have a map of where those houses sit, and I'll turn that over to the clerk so you can take a look at it, now, you might say, well, those houses were impaired because there was, there was problems with it, there was press coverage, there were other things with those houses, or there was some sort of impaired sales, and that explains their losses, that would be a fair argument, I don't think they'd lose that much, but, so what I did is I went out and found a couple of houses that had nothing to do with CES, had nothing to do with it, with the power producer buying them and reselling them, they were completely independent sales, here's one, 10655 367th Street, Sunrise Township, five acres, 1,560 finished square feet, 40 by 64 pole building, three-car garage, 2424 deck, two-car garage under it, big place, big place, this one sold for 296, 297, but if we look at the tax values, and again, I'm going to give people MLS information on this, you can see that the tax values actually dropped and then went back up when they sold, so when, when the panels went in, their tax values dropped for their land, and then it went back up, so that was interesting to me that they dropped, and again, all the photos, of course. And again, all the photos, of course, not one mention of a panel. Again, if you're not marketing these things, it shows that there's some sort of a detriment to the property. That's just a fair take from looking at how these things are being marketed. There's no way that these people don't know they're there, but they're not marketing them. I have just one more. It's a completely independent sale, has no connection to CES LLC. This one sold at $289. Unfortunately, the couple of years before, it had sold for $319. So, it had lost money. 11 years later, it actually sold for less. Pardon me. In 2006, it sold for $308. Had a bunch of updates done to it, and then it sold for $289 in 2017. So, those are the kind of things, as a real estate agent, David, I look at, and I look at how these properties are being marketed, and I think there's an issue there. They're not being marketed with what's happening around the property. When I market my home, I have a farm in back. It has a large cornfield, about 30 acres. I won't really worry about marketing that. I won't worry about screening it. I won't worry about people knowing it. These real estate agents and the losses that were incurred on these properties seem to me as though that there is some sort of an impact. It looks like there's an impact on these properties occurring. So, that concerns me greatly. What also concerns me greatly is that Greenmark Solar, when they went to do essentially something very, very similar to what you're proposing that we do, they told the county when they applied that they were commercial. The commercial tax rates are being applied to you guys. So, you know, again, I have no problem with solar, and I think that we have protected access to solar. Solar as an idea is fantastic. I'm just not sure that this zone is the proper place for it. So, I'm a little bit worried about that. So, I'm going to wrap it up there. And Jennifer, you had some other comments that you wanted to make near the end of the meeting, as I remember.
Are you frozen?
I think she's died.
She's forgotten him, but now her tongue lips are frozen.
Need an electric heater over there. Are you okay? Do you still want to talk or not?
I didn't know I wanted to, so if I said that...
Yeah, I thought you did, just to clarify. Go ahead, Dave.
Jennifer indicated that she had some examples of the comp plan language and how...
And how it was taken out of context.
Oh, that. Sorry.
Sorry, Jennifer.
It's the gloves.
That I did say.
I'm sorry I didn't remember perfectly. Thank you, Dave.
So, I don't want to belabor it too much because there's been a lot of discussion about the comp plan itself, and I also don't care to get into a tit-for-tat with the applicant with respect to it. I really just wanted to bring it up more from the perspective of that as a planner, the comprehensive plan is a very important document and tool for us to guide moving forward. It's purposefully general and at the 10,000-foot level because the specific policies that support the comprehensive plan are things like your official controls, like your zoning ordinance. And that's where you get at how you want to implement or how you define what those 10,000-foot level things are. So, when you look at the comprehensive plan, you can't necessarily take a goal statement and not read it in conjunction with the strategy statements that support the goal statement because the strategy statement is what I like to call the 5,000-foot level, right? So, the goal statement's the 10,000. The strategy statement are the 5,000-foot. Those support and enhance the goal statement of sort of how you intend to go about doing it. Then your zoning becomes the on-the-ground one-foot level, if you will, right? So, the zoning has to support and be consistent with those things. So, one of the things that I did, for instance, and I thought it was prudent to take the goal statement that had to do with solar access protection, since that's what we were talking about. So, actually, if we can take the screen just for one... Oh, actually, I think I have to switch it. Hold on.
You did this before, remember?
We'll see if my feet work.
Yeah.
It's getting a bit cold in here.
It's cold in here.
Okay. So, we're going to go back. So, this is the comprehensive plan that we all keep referencing and talking about. And see if my fingers work. Oh, they do. Sometimes they don't. The goal statement that has been referenced in the November 29 letter, and that actually I think a couple of you also mentioned tonight, was assure adequate solar access for residents. Now, first of all, I think it was Councilmember Carr who referenced the fact that, or maybe even the mayor, that part of this actually is tied to the Metropolitan Council's requirements. And the Metropolitan Council does not say that communities have to have or address, even within these 2040 updates that we're working on right now, a statement that community solar gardens are acceptable or that land needs to be protected for that. What it does say is, "We have to identify solar access protection with respect to individual residents," which is a very different statement. So, that is the basis for where these statements are coming from. So, when this comp plan was adopted, the community solar garden did not exist per the statute. So, the program he's speaking to did not exist when this goal statement was written. So, you can't say that this was written with the intent of supporting this project because actually that didn't exist. The program did not exist. So, that's the first thing. The second piece of it is, the key policies are what I call strategies that support the goal statement are, number one, new subdivisions will encourage, will be encouraged to accommodate the use of passive and active solar energy systems with special attention given to street, lot, and building orientation. So, we're talking about a very specific residential scale in that policy statement. The second is solar access protection. So, the protection of it, it doesn't say the installation or the specific technology or any of those things, or whether or not you intend to have ground-mounted, building-mounted, et cetera. It leaves it open because we're at that 5,000-foot level, is solar access protection will be assured with the city's five-acre minimum lot size and setback requirements. So, you can't read the goal statement independently. You have to read the goal statement with the policy statements that support the goal statement. Then the next step of the city is to determine on a zoning perspective or your official control perspective, how you implement those policy statements and how you implement that goal statement. So, I just wanted to bring it up because there's been a lot of debate back and forth about pulling just these one-lines out of the comprehensive plan. And really, the comp plan is meant to be read sometimes with a collection of statements, and simply isolating one is not a fair depiction of how or the guide that you intend to use moving forward. So, that was it. Staff just wanted to use that as an example.
Very good. Danny?
Thank you. You know, this is an opinion, but it's also a question based on what Jennifer said about the 5 and 10,000-foot assessment of this. When I read that complaint, to me, everything in there kind of references this solar protection on an individual basis. It talks about five acres repeatedly. It talks about personal residence repeatedly. This is just a different application than I've...
And on that note, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second. On that note, David and others, I apologize. I forgot to read what Scandia replaced. I read the findings of Scandia when they repealed their large solar ordinance, but what I didn't do is I didn't read what they replaced it with. And what they replaced it with was incredibly similar to what our solar, individual solar ordinance looks like. What they did is they backed off from that great big thing, and they said, "Wait a second. We're going to go ahead and do the 800 square foot or the power-limited, certain number of kilowatts for individual homeowners." So, they could make those choices. So, they kind of went from that big one to that small one, and that's where we already are.
Basically, word for word.
Yeah, it looks like they kind of maybe lifted a little bit of it from us, so, yeah.
Well, and I was first, so I heard everybody. I just want to comment. I think, and I try to go fast because we're running out of time. It's getting late. It's cold. The biggest thing for me is, especially after hearing from everybody else, a lot of our responses were to the memo in general. It's where we responded to the tax values and the things that have been presented. A lot of that is, it's not really, it's about solar because we're talking about the solar industry, but it's not really applying, at least to me, with the big picture of the issue is, does it belong in grant? Not about, are we paying too much? Is it doing this? None of that stuff really matters, but does it belong in grant for a lot of really good reasons that everybody said? So, I think it's a split thing, and I think that's what Denny was just saying here. I agree with that, and I just want to support him in what he said.
I'm going to jump on that real quick. I think solar has a place in grant. And I think that solar, properly designed and put in areas, you know, I just think that saying it doesn't belong in grant, that's not accurate from my perspective whatsoever. I think it does belong in grant. I think that we have, through our comp plan, through the direction of the Met Council in our comp plan, through the encouragement of people to make individual decisions, which we have always done in grant, I think it does belong in grant. And I think with a different application from U.S. Solar, I could have a very different view. I'll end it there.
I think we're going to hear from the applicant, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. I'm going to end my comments, and then Mr. Watts, you're up.
No, whatever.
Mr. Watts? Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council members, first I'll just respond to the point that staff just brought up about the comp plan goals versus the key policies, since that's probably salient right now. If we meet the goals of the comp plan, then we meet the goals of the comp plan. So, regardless of the key policies, which Jennifer just acknowledged were written prior to the existence of community solar, U.S. Solar maintains that our application supports the comp plan in the 14 ways in the memo submitted on November 29, 2018. In reference to the MLS numbers, simply put, this was a recitation of anecdotal evidence, sales prices of a small number of projects that would be, mathematically speaking, not statistically significant due to the small sample size. The project that you're referencing, North Star, is not community solar. Totally different thing. That project is literally 100 times the size of the maximum solar project that would be permissible under the application that we're here tonight to discuss. There was an article alluded to written by David Schaefer. It was in regard to worries about property values. The Shisago County Assessor did an assessment of this and concluded no impact, not negative, not positive, in association with solar projects and nearby home sales. So, I just want to make sure that's clear. The Shisago County Assessor concluded no impact. As for the cost to ratepayers, which is Councilmember Giefer's point and one that we didn't really discuss until this moment, there was also mention of how these rates have been skyrocketing for 15 years, which obviously the community solar program has not been around that long. So, your complaints about skyrocketing rates are valid, but they are not due to community solar. And then when you referenced that the value of solar rate is too low to get financing, you're further illustrating the point that we're not being paid at these tremendous values. In fact, the rates are so low, it's hard to finance. But actually, the value of solar, the way that this works, and it's actually quite genius, is the Public Utilities Commission hears from XL Energy and other experts about the factors of the cost of electricity. So, yes, it costs a certain amount of dollars to build a solar project, but does that save anything due to the time of day that the electricity is produced or due to it being closer to the end users? So, they factor in all of these things, and without adding any sort of government subsidy, they determine what is the true value of solar electricity, and that's what we're paid for. So, there is no ongoing government subsidy, but I will remind you that traditional fossil fuel energy developments get government subsidies also. Lastly, I think Councilmember Tom Carr used the word torturous to describe this process. I would say that you, the council, have built your side of the public record. I feel that I've built my side of the public record. I think the public has shown their support via just petition. Mr. Mayor and council members ask that you please act on this application tonight. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Mr. Watts, this may be unfair insofar as this directed to you, but footnote 15 of your council's letters suggests that two council members are Realtors that would directly benefit from residential development. What do you mean to state when you say that?
Well, I didn't state that, but I believe that it is, I don't know about the word "would," but the word "could" is certainly true, that Realtors could benefit from increased residential development in the city of Grant, although I do note in the comp plan that they do warn against, or warn that the remaining land could be vanished to the uses of residential development.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by that. Are you asking that two council members not participate in the decision-making on your application?
Well, again, I didn't state that, and I think it was...
Well, you're here as the applicant's representative. Are you asking that two council members not participate in the decision-making on your application?
No, I think the intent was to put on the public record the true fact that two of the council members are Realtors that could theoretically have an impact.
Okay. Well, what we're doing now, we should also put on the record that the law of the state of Minnesota, as announced in Linds versus Coon Creek Watershed District, illustrated that even in a case where five watershed district managers lived on the very ditch that was supposed to be cleaned out by the watershed improvement project, the court said that they were permitted to act on it and to approve the improvement project because even though they had a direct effect or impact on their own property, that wasn't a conflict of interest that would be disqualifying or even a problem. The rule is even more strongly held here where there's no financial interest by any member of this council on the property in question or for the application. So, I mean, let's just make it clear, as long as we're setting things out for the record, there's absolutely no way to suggest that there's any financial interest or conflict of interest in any of these members acting on this application. Wouldn't you agree?
The case law that you referenced would be a concern for me if I was requesting that the council members would abstain from the vote, which I'm not. I think it was simply put on the public record that two of the council members are Realtors, which is a true fact.
Yeah. Okay. Fair enough, but the law will speak for itself. I'd refer you to that case. If you dispute that analysis, let me know right now, please.
I'm not disputing the analysis of that case law because I'm not requesting the council members to abstain from the vote.
Well, you're not disputing the case law because you're not familiar with the case law, and so you're not here alleging that there's a violation of some rule governing conflict of interest, correct?
That's correct. I'm not alleging any kind of violation of a rule or law, and I'm also not requesting that the council members abstain from the vote.
Would the application of the solar array that you propose to install, could it be installed in a commercial district? And if so, would it still be an agricultural use?
The answer, or the question of could it be installed in a commercial district would be based on that jurisdiction's zoning ordinance is...
Physically?
There is likely no suitable site in the city of Grant for the reasons of physical constraints as well as electrical constraints inside the commercial districts, but I haven't done that research on this city specifically. I have looked at other cities.
Let's stick with the city of Grant. Are you familiar with whether or not a solar array like that which you propose, either slightly larger, slightly smaller, could be installed on a commercially zoned parcel, leaving aside the zoning classification?
Yeah, the physical characteristics of the site and the electrical characteristics of the site are the things that would constrain it outside of zoning. So, I don't know if there is, say, for example, a 10-acre parcel with no existing structures on it, no trees, no wetlands, not in the shoreland overlay district, not in a flood zone, directly adjacent to three-phase power line owned by XL Energy in XL Energy Service territory. The feeder line has adequate capacity, and the substation has adequate capacity. If you met all of those and any of the criteria that I left out because it's not available off the top of my head, then it could be theoretically done. However, I think it's really unlikely that you'd find any suitable sites inside the commercial district of the city of Grant.
Well, any site or combination of sites, assume all those things are true. Could the array that you propose be installed on such a site?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
No.
Oh.
Can you put your array on a site that is otherwise commercial in the city of Grant?
If it meets all those criteria that I just mentioned, yes, you could do it theoretically.
And if you did that, would it still be an agricultural use?
The use, yes, would be agricultural based on the fact that it's functioning like a CRP land, which is also an agricultural use, which promotes long-term longevity of the land, soils, air, water, et cetera.
Can you explain what you mean? If you put your solar array on a piece of commercially zoned property in the city of Grant, would it still be, would you still allege that it's an ag use? Grant, would it still be, would you still allege that it's an ag use?
I would, in the same way that if you were to begin farming on a commercial piece of land in the city of Grant, it would be in agricultural use. The question isn't about the land, the question's about the use, and so I will say again that it's our position that this is in agricultural use.
Because the land is lying fallow? Is that...
No, that doesn't have anything to do with it.
Well, explain to me why it does. You said the land was like a CRP-type use. I'd like to understand why.
Oh, I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood you. Yes, the pollinator-friendly habitat, which is required by the state statute, is one of the primary reasons that I'm arguing this is in agricultural use, although I think it's done in better detail in the memo. So, if you take something that, again, I'm contending is in agricultural use, and you put it on commercial land, still an agricultural use, just like if you start, you know, farming on a commercial piece of land, you're still farming. That's what the use is, it'd be agriculture, right?
All right, so, and just a couple more questions, if I could. Are there any agricultural uses that you're aware of that are presently permitted in the city of Grant that would foreclose the installation of pollinator-friendly parcels or vegetation?
I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit it, although I don't know what's going to fund it.
Pardon me?
I'm not aware of anything in the ordinance that would prohibit someone who owned agricultural land from installing pollinator-friendly habitat, but, I mean, you can look at what percentage of those folks are currently dedicating 10 acres of land to pollinator-friendly habitat. This is a private investment to get pollinator-friendly habitat, which is typically not just given to a city through private investment.
Well, what percentage is dedicated or given over to pollinator-friendly use presently, if you know?
Inside the city of Grant?
Yes.
I have no idea.
What is the topography of the site, the Welander site, that you are suggesting installation? How would you describe the topography?
I'd describe it as quite flat, especially relatively speaking. The technology that we use can accommodate slopes of, you know, 10% quite easily, but what we're talking about here is, again, this is just off the top of my head, we can look at the site plan, which was submitted and is on the record, but I believe we're talking about a variation of topography of something like eight feet across, six to eight feet across the entire 10-acre area, which relatively speaking is quite flat.
As parcels in the city of Grant go, how would you characterize the relative visibility of this parcel compared to other ag parcels?
Yeah, due to its flat topography, the visibility, considering what is required in this ordinance, which is landscape screening, would be very minimal, because you, at the road level, you are not looking down upon the proposed community solar garden. Again, we're talking about a tax amendment application, but just using this project as an example, 'cause that's what you're asking me.
No, actually, I'm asking you, as it's presently configured, how would you describe the visibility of this parcel compared to other parcels in the city of Grant?
It's pretty visible. It's on Manning Ave. It's pretty visible, without landscape screening.
Was there, were there parcels that were, say, lower or more obscured from public view that you looked at for this installation before you settled on this parcel? And if so, could you identify them?
No. I think this is, again, because of its flat topography, this is a site that's very easy to screen. It's also one of a very, very small amount of sites that we identified as suitable in Grant. I think we had a grand total of three, and that's prior to any sort of performance standards, which would further limit the applications you could see. So, from this single company's perspective, and I think site selection is what sets us apart from others, we're very good at it, there were maybe maximum three. I can think of two off the top of my head that were at least considered suitable, and that we reached out to. So, we don't have a bunch of extra...
Is the answer no?
I think I said no, didn't I?
All right. Are you familiar with the, those cities that do require solar arrays to be installed in lower elevations, such as ponding basins, or wetlands, or gravel pits?
No, not familiar with that.
You've not observed that?
Never seen an ordinance, I've never seen an ordinance stipulate a requirement about low topography. I think some see the low topography as a negative, because then you can look down onto the solar and perhaps see more of it. But I've never seen an ordinance structured that way.
It's not your allegation that any of the planner or the staff made a false statement to you about the proliferation of solar arrays in cities versus ag areas, correct?
Can you be more specific? I'm not sure what the question is.
Well, you remember that at the commencement of this meeting, there was a discussion from the planner, and she indicated, she read from an email from you, wherein you implored her to correct a quote-unquote "false" statement. Do you remember that email?
Yes, I do.
Do you allege that somebody's made a false statement to you?
Yeah, no, I think there have been false statements made on the public record, and we contend that, and it's been stated here on the public record tonight, but I believe it is false to claim that there is general consensus to limit CSES to light industrial or general business districts. If you look at counties, cities, townships that permit community solar inside the state of Minnesota, the vast majority of them do so on agriculturally-zoned land.
And the cities and the municipalities that you identified are largely agricultural jurisdictions, correct?
There's quite a variety here.
Okay, correct.
There's quite a variety of characters of the jurisdictions that I've mentioned here, so I won't characterize the, like, 40, or however many jurisdictions I referenced, they're not all the same.
Well, you're familiar, many of what you listed there were counties. You're familiar with the phenomenon that the county may permit something, but expect or require or see that the underlying jurisdictions, the cities and the townships within it, may adopt a different regulatory framework, right?
I'm familiar with that, although the counties that I've listed, those townships are not adopting their own ordinances, 'cause they don't do their own planning and zoning, so the county's ordinances apply. They are the authority having jurisdiction.
Is that your claim for all the counties that you listed?
I'm not saying that not a single township in a single one of these counties could have their own, but looking at this list, I can't find one that that is not the case. The, it is a false statement to say that there's a general consensus to limit CSES to light industrial or general business districts. The majority of authorities having jurisdiction in this state, which permit community solar, do so on agriculturally-zoned land.
But you don't dispute that a city could reasonably determine that that would be a more appropriate location for it, do you?
Well, the city would be a different HJ. The question is, inside of a county, does the township do their own planning and zoning, and therefore, can they have stricter standards?
You don't dispute the notion that the city could reasonably dispute the note, the idea that ag is perhaps not preferred as a location, and instead, commercial or industrial would be preferred? You don't dispute that, do you?
No, but that's unrelated to your question about the false claim, because my claim is about, broadly speaking, authorities having jurisdiction in the state of Minnesota, not this specific city.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the question's answered, but I appreciate your response. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. I think we're gonna wrap it up, unless you guys have anything else. And Mr. Watt has asked us to make a determination tonight. That would be in direct, in my view, direct contravention to, number one, your emails about having the co-applicant, the landowner, here with you today. I read some of those emails, which seems a strange juxtaposition from those emails. Two, I believe your company was the mover to, I believe you asked to move it to February, to our February meeting. I don't believe the council was ready to take action tonight, so I don't think we're going to take action, at least from my point of view. I think we're probably better off doing what we had originally planned to do, and what you had asked us to do, which was make that determination in our February meeting. So, unless I have any other comments from the staff, I'm gonna ask for a tabling motion to bring this to our February meeting, so that we can take some action on this.
I'll also move, as that was the original plan.
That was the plan. Do I have a second on that tabling motion?
It'll give us a chance to chew on the things that Mr. Watts has...
Has just said to us, that's correct. Do I have a second on that tabling motion?
I'll second.
Very good. All those in favor of tabling to the February City Council meeting, we will make a determination. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
And I would move to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Giefer, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let's get out of here, it's closed!